Good morning, everyone. I'm Dan Grotnick, Chair of the City Planning Commission and Director of the Department of City Planning. Welcome to today's public meeting of February 5th. We are going to kick off today's agenda with several votes, starting with 1093, 1095 Jerome Avenue and High Bridge in the Bronx. This proposal by the Department of Housing Preservation and Development for a 100% income-restricted affordable building with 60 homes would include set-asides for low-income seniors and formerly homeless individuals and families. The building site is near Reverend T. Wendell Foster Park and the Port train at 167 Street. Staying in the Bronx, we'll next vote on a waterfront public access area that will be part of a new mixed-use development at 1460 to 1480 Sheridan Boulevard in Cretona Park East. The project would sit alongside the recently transformed Sheridan Boulevard and the Bronx River and create additional public open space connected to the neighboring Starlight Park. The Commission will also vote on a requested de-mapping by New York Community Hospital of Brooklyn in East Midwood. This change would allow the construction of an infectious disease isolation unit, adding around 1,500 square feet of community facility space to the existing hospital building. Heading over to East Harlem in Manhattan, we'll vote on an application by the Department of Small Business Services to establish the East Harlem 125th Street Business Improvement District. The district boundaries would roughly extend between Second and Fifth Avenues primarily along the East 125th Street corridor. We'll vote as well on a parking authorization for 720 West End Avenue on the Upper West Side. The developer is looking to add 15 spaces to an apartment building with over 130 homes. Our final votes for today regard office acquisitions by the New York Police Department. The first site at 9777 Queens Boulevard in Forest Hills would provide new space for between 45 and 60 members of the NYPD's Internal Affairs Bureau. Just down the road, at 9525 Queens Boulevard in Rego Park, the NYPD is seeking to lease space in this building for its Queens North Traffic Enforcement Division. If approved, around 230 personnel would operate there in several shifts. Switching gears to today's public hearings, and welcome to those of you who are here for that. The public is invited to testify on an office space lease at One Battery Park Plaza for New York City's Independent Budget Office. The proposed location, less than a mile from their current office at 110 Williams Street, is large enough to accommodate the IBO's 50-plus employees and its city charter mandated meetings. From one office space application to another, we will next hold a public hearing on a request by the New York City Human Resources Administration to acquire space at 209 Bay Street in Tompkinsville, Staten Island. This move will allow HRA Homelessness Prevention Services to continue co-locating with existing HRA services in the areas such as SNAP, Medicaid, Home Energy Assistance, and much more into one hub for all of Staten Island. We welcome the public to testify on a mixed-use proposal at 10251 Queens Boulevard in Forest Hills. This project would create over 200 new homes, including more than 50 income-restricted homes. The building would feature ground-floor retail, helping keep this commercial corridor along the Boulevard intact. The site is a couple of blocks from the 67th Avenue M. and R. train station, as well as Yellowstone Park. Next up is another mixed-use building at 2510 Coney Island Avenue in Sheep's Head Bay, Brooklyn. Within walking distance to the Neck Road Q. train station and to Mellett Playground, this project contains 60 homes, over 15 of which would be income-restricted affordable, as well as ground-floor retail. Our final hearing for today is on the Atlantic Avenue Mixed-Use Plan, a transformational, community-led proposal to bring new jobs, homes, and infrastructure to a roughly 21-block stretch of Atlantic Avenue and neighboring blocks in Crown Heights, Bed-Stuy, and Prospect Heights. Since the 1960s, this area of central Brooklyn has been zoned for one-to-two-story auto uses, storage, industrial buildings, despite its excellent access to public transit and major job hubs. It's overdue for a change, and that's exactly what this plan, also known as AIMUP, will deliver. It will revamp the neighborhood into a more active, dynamic mix of residential, commercial, manufacturing, including around 4,600 new homes, approximately 1,440 of them income-restricted affordable homes, as well as space for 2,800 new jobs. To help achieve this housing goal, the plan will maximize the number of income-restricted affordable homes that can be built on public sites in the neighborhood. Some of these projects are already moving forward; others are being explored. With this plan, we can address the chronic housing shortage across the area where demand to live has skyrocketed and zoning has stymied growth, putting pressure on the existing housing stock and the existing tenants in the neighborhood. But a neighborhood plan is more than homes and jobs, and indeed AIMUP would include infrastructure and streetscape improvements to help the community grow and thrive into the future. To this end, the New York City Department of Transportation will install street safety improvement projects, including planters, bike corrals, and daylighting at intersections along Atlantic Avenue in nearby blocks to improve pedestrian visibility, safety, and accessibility. The city will also invest heavily in the public realm, enhancing Lowry Triangle and delivering over $24 million to improve St. Andrews Playground, including a new synthetic turf multi-use field with a running track, basketball and handball court upgrades, renovated playground spaces, and new seating, shade trees, plantings, and more. Other infrastructure work in the wider neighborhood includes stormwater and sewer upgrades along Atlantic Avenue and Dean Street, as well as subsurface stormwater detention systems and more than 100 rain gardens. All these investments will bolster sewer capacity and help these neighborhoods withstand flooding and storm events. Since public review began, both community boards, Three and Eight, and Borough President Antonio Reynoso have issued favorable, thoughtful recommendations for AIMUP. I'd like to thank them for their support, as well as Councilmembers Crystal Hudson and Shi Ose for their leadership on this comprehensive initiative that would benefit Brooklynites for many years to come. With that, let's get to it. Madam Secretary, floor is yours.
Good morning. This is the City Planning Commission public meeting held remotely through the NYC Engage Portal and in-person in the CPC Hearing Room, 120 Broadway, Lower Concourse. Today is Wednesday, February 5th, 2025. I will now call the roll. Chair Grotnick?
Here.
Vice Chair Knuckles?
Here.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Present.
Commissioner Cerulo?
Here.
Commissioner Kraw?
Present.
Commissioner Gold?
Here.
Commissioner Goodrich?
Here.
Commissioner Carmani?
Here.
Commissioner Mann?
Here.
Commissioner Marine?
Here.
Commissioner Osorio?
Here.
Commissioner Rampechak?
Here.
A quorum is present. The first item is the approval of minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, January 22nd, 2025.
Great. On the minutes, I make a motion to approve those minutes of January 22nd, seconded by the Vice Chairman. Thank you, all those in favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, minutes approved.
Scheduling. Calendar numbers one through seven, scheduling Wednesday, February 19th, 2025, for a public hearing to be held in person in the CPC Hearing Room, 120 Broadway, and remotely through the NYC Engage Portal.
Great. I make a motion to approve the resolution, seconded by Commissioner Benjamin. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, thank you. The resolution is adopted.
The next part of the calendar is the Reports section on page six, Borough of the Bronx, calendar number nine, 1093, 1095 Jerome Avenue, UDEP, CD4, C250091, HAX. In the matter of an application for a UDEP designation, project approval, and disposition of city-owned property concerning 1093, 1095 Jerome Avenue, UDEP, for a favorable report on calendar number nine, Chair Grotnick?
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Aye.
Commissioner Cerulo?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraw?
Yes.
Commissioner Gold?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmani?
Yes.
Commissioner Mann?
Yes.
Commissioner Marine?
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampechak?
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number nine. Calendar number 10, 1460, 1480 Sheridan Boulevard Waterfront, CD9, N230298, ZAX, in the matter of an application for zoning authorization concerning 1460, 1480 Sheridan Boulevard Waterfront. For the adoption of calendar number 10, Chair Grotnick?
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Aye.
Commissioner Cerulo?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraw?
Yes.
Commissioner Gold?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich?
I'm abstaining. I didn't have enough time to review this one.
Commissioner Carmani?
Yes.
Commissioner Mann?
Yes.
Commissioner Marine?
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio?
I vote no. I have expressed concerns throughout the review of this project. As noted in the original racial equity report, this area requires deeper affordability to reflect the socioeconomic conditions of this community. Although I recognize the importance of advancing affordable housing, I cannot support a proposal at this stage because it doesn't fully address the impact of a development of this scale, particularly if the people who fought to recover this waterfront could potentially be displaced by gentrification. Thanks.
Commissioner Rampechak?
Yes.
Calendar number 10 has been adopted. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number 11, New York Community Hospital of Brooklyn, CD14, C180070, MMK, in the matter of an application for a city map amendment concerning New York Community Hospital of Brooklyn. For a favorable report on calendar number 11, Chair Grotnick?
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Aye.
Commissioner Cerulo?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraw?
Yes.
Commissioner Gold?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmani?
Yes.
Commissioner Mann?
Yes.
Commissioner Marine?
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio?
Yes, and I want to thank the department for considering the recommendations in the report. Greatly appreciated.
Commissioner Rampechak?
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 11. Borough of Manhattan, calendar number 12, East Harlem 125th Street Bid, CD11, N250114, BDM, in the matter of an application for a business improvement district concerning East Harlem 125th Street Bid. For a favorable report on calendar number 12, Chair Grotnick?
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles?
Critically needed, yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Aye.
Commissioner Cerulo?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraw?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich?
My apologies.
Commissioner Gold?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmani?
Yes.
Commissioner Mann?
Yes.
Commissioner Marine?
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampechak?
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 12. Calendar number 13, 720 West End Avenue Parking Authorization, CD7, N240408, ZAM, in the matter of an application for zoning authorization concerning 720 West End Avenue Parking Authorization. For the adoption of calendar number 13, Chair Grotnick?
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Aye.
Commissioner Cerulo?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraw?
Yes.
Commissioner Gold?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmani?
Yes.
Commissioner Mann?
Yes.
Commissioner Marine?
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampechak?
Yes.
Calendar number 13 has been adopted. Borough of Queens, calendar number 14, 9777 Queens Boulevard NYPD Office Space Acquisition, CD6, N250105, PXQ, in the matter of an application for a notice of intent to acquire office space concerning 9777 Queens Boulevard NYPD Office Space Acquisition. For a favorable report on calendar number 13, Chair Grotnick?
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Aye.
Commissioner Cerulo?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraw?
Yes.
Commissioner Gold?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmani?
Yes.
Commissioner Mann?
Yes.
Commissioner Marine?
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampechak?
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 14. Calendar number 15, 9525 Queens Boulevard NYPD Office Acquisition, CD6, N250092, PXQ, in the matter of an application for a notice of intent to acquire office space concerning 9525 Queens Boulevard NYPD Office Acquisition. For a favorable report on calendar number 15, Chair Grotnick?
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Aye.
Commissioner Cerulo?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraw?
Yes.
Commissioner Gold?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmani?
Yes.
Commissioner Mann?
Yes.
Commissioner Marine?
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampechak?
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 15. The next part of the calendar is the Public Hearing section on page nine.
Great, and we ask members of the public who are here to share their views to limit their remarks to three minutes. We welcome all of you. Thank you for joining us. Let's go to the first item of the day.
Borough of Manhattan, calendar number 16, One Battery Park Plaza, IBO Office Space Acquisition, CD1, N250142, PXM, public hearing in the matter of an application for a notice of intent to acquire office space concerning One Battery Park Plaza, IBO Office Space Acquisition.
Wonderful, and on behalf of an applicant team here, we have Marla Simpson. I see also Cornelius Armentraut, Louisa Chafee, Mark Stein, Kyle Daniels, Logan Clark, from a variety of DCAST and IBO, I believe, but we're going to turn it over to you. Welcome. Good to have you here with us.
Louisa? That's right. Yes. Good morning, Chairman Grotnick. Good morning, Marla. Good morning, members of the Commission. While I'm not able to join you in person today, I'd like to very much thank you for your time as IBO presents a matter of critical importance to our agency, and that's the agency that I have had the honor of leading since March of 2023. IBO is an independent, non-mayoral, nonpartisan source of budget, policy, and economic analysis. We serve all New Yorkers, including elected officials, community boards, civic groups, and members of the general public. Today, we seek your approval of our request to lease office space for IBO's offices. As you know, our current office, 110 Williams Street, is in the process of transitioning to Administration for Children's Services. I've asked my special assistant, Marla Simpson, to present the application for your consideration, and thank you.
Thank you. Earlier this month, I provided a similar briefing for the Community Board One Land Use Committee. IBO is here today because it is essential for us to move, and as soon as we possibly can. We are a tiny agency for city government purposes, but we're twice the size that we were when we first moved into 110 Williams, which is now overcrowded and subpar in every possible way. The good news for the city is that 110 Williams is being completely renovated. However, as you may recall, that's because the entire building is going to be ACS's headquarters. Our lease ends in 18 months, and our space folds into ACS's lease. Indeed, this body approved the 195 action for ACS in 2022. Recognizing these plans, as well as our own needs, we began a site search well over three years ago. In June 2023, I presented to you a plan to relocate to 80 Pine Street. The term sheet for that site had been agreed to nine months before I presented, but unfortunately, the lease was not finalized in the months that followed your approval, and in late 2023, 80 Pine was sold, and IBO had to start all over again. Because this is a real crisis for us, we undertook an aggressive and comprehensive search using three approaches. First, of course, we continued to look at sites identified by DCAST and its broker, although none fully met our needs. Second, we looked at what seemed to be a promising space already under city lease, but it wasn't vacant, and there were no concrete plans for how or when it might become vacant. Thus, IBO leadership, working independently, undertook our own wide-ranging site search, resulting in a detailed evaluation of about a dozen sites. That process resulted in the selection of One Battery Park Plaza as the most cost-effective and best-suited space for us. Having done that, we circled back to DCAST for their team to be able to move this forward. As you'll see, the site is accessible and well fits our needs, including the need that we now have to be very much more public-facing and to engage with community organizations and hold meetings at least on a modest scale.
You're out of time, so let us ask you how you see this fitting your needs here.
Again, the major shift that you'll see in this floor plan is that it does accommodate our current 51 staff, plus we have a large cadre of interns and fellows that we didn't use to have, and there is modest amount of meeting space because we now do quite a number of community engagement activities, and it is useful for us to be able to bring stakeholders from academia, from the neighborhoods, from professional organizations to have great direct dialogue with our staff.
Great, thank you very much. Let me see if there are questions. Commissioner Kraw?
Good morning, Ms. Simpson. I'm just confirming that this is an IBO-identified property. It was not identified through DCAST and presented to you.
It appeared on some early DCAST lists, but we had already engaged in conversations with ownership, and we did not look at this space through DCAST. We did all of our own discussions and then brought it to DCAST.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Rampechak?
Thank you for the presentation. You had mentioned that the number of employees grew the last few years. Do you foresee it growing further after you take possession of this space, from 51 to, I don't know?
We do. Our budget is unique among city agencies. It is pegged to the budget of the Office of Management and Budget. So, we receive 12.5% of the appropriation for the Office of Management and Budget, and as that organization grows over time, we grow commensurate with that. Looking at a 20-year trajectory, and this is a 21-year lease, we do expect modest growth, perhaps not doubling again the way we did this time, but we expect some modest growth, and this projects room for that.
Thank you. I have one.
Vice Chair Knuckles?
Good morning. What is the metric, if you know it, per square foot per employee nowadays? You have 51 employees, I've read, and you're moving into about 18,000 square feet?
That's correct. There is a metric that the city applies. I don't know it off the top of my head, but it is an internal metric to OMB, and as an independent agency, it does not apply to us. It is also the case, and more importantly, in terms of looking at this location, that the addition that really reflects the additional space above and beyond our need for staff is to have communal meeting space, which is not something we can do at all today without sort of borrowing it from other agencies. So, this provides a modest-sized conference room for us. I think it would accommodate, depending on the way it was organized, up to 50 people. And then it also includes meeting spaces, which we don't have at all now, small meeting spaces.
So, are most of your employees in offices or at desktops?
There is a floor plan included in the materials. Do you want to switch to that slide there? There are a number of offices that you'll see on the sort of perimeter of the location, although parts of the perimeter are open, and they're cube, I mean, not every part of the perimeter has individual offices. There are also cubicles that extend to that area. It is predominantly a cubicle arrangement. Many of the sort of offices are also shared, as they are today, and there is room for a pantry. There are small meeting rooms and storage rooms and things that we don't have, but you'll see the layout is basically there. The conference facilities are in the sort of interior, and the cubicles and offices are on the exterior.
How many floors are you on? You're on more than one floor?
Oh, no. Oh, no. It's a portion of the fourth floor.
Okay.
It is also a subdivisible space, and so, again, if there were a need down the road based on a change in sort of paradigm, it is a space that, in that same building, there are examples of suites that have been subdivided further.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman.
No.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We don't have further questions for you. We appreciate it. Okay, and I do not see members of the public wishing to be heard on this item. Do you see any members, Madam Secretary, members of the public interested here?
No, Chair, I do not.
Okay, then with that, we're going to close the hearing on calendar 16 and open the hearing on the next item.
Thank you, Chair. Borough of Staten Island, calendar number 17, 209 Bay Street, HRA Office Space, CD1, N250082, PXR, public hearing in the matter of an application for a notice of intent to acquire office space concerning 209 Bay Street, HRA Office Space.
Okay, and on behalf of the applicant team here, we have on Zoom, we have Brusti Patel, Colleen O'Connor Grant, Rizwana Sheikh, Chris Grove, Dana Guyette, and Charles Gross. That's the team. Whenever you all are ready, we look forward to hearing from you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Rizwana Sheikh, Assistant Deputy Commissioner for Facilities at New York City Human Resources Administration. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present our office space application for 209 Bay Street in Staten Island. Next slide, please. HRA is seeking approval to continue using 209 Bay Street in Staten Island's Community District One. This one-story, 2,000-square-foot facility has been a key part of our service network since 2006. Our lease expired into 2024, and we are requesting an extension to maintain services while securing a long-term facility. Next slide, please. 209 Bay Street is centrally located within the HRA service hub that includes 201, 207, and 215 Bay Streets. I'm sorry. Next slide, please. The entrance faces Bay Street, ensuring easy access for clients and staff. The site is operated by Church Avenue Merchant Block Association, also known as CAMBA, and they are under HRA's Home Base Program, which provides homelessness prevention services. Next slide, please. Extending our lease keeps us close to other HRA offices, making operations more efficient and ensuring clients are easily have access to essential services. Nearby offices offer cash assistance, supplemental nutrition assistance, also known as SNAP, Medicaid, Adult Protective Services, and domestic violence support, creating a convenient, one-stop resource hub. Next slide, please. This facility includes a welcoming reception area, open office spaces, and meeting rooms designed for client consultations and orientation sessions, ensuring efficient and comfortable service delivery. Next slide, please. 209 Bay Street is highly accessible via public transit. It's near the Staten Island Railway's Tompkinsville Station, multiple MTA bus lines, and the Staten Island Ferry Terminal. This connects clients and staff to the broader city. Last slide, please. In conclusion, extending the lease at 209 Bay Street is essential for maintaining critical services for Staten Island residents. This facility plays a vital role in HRA's mission to support vulnerable communities with accessible and efficient service delivery. Thank you so much, and we're happy to take any questions you may have.
Wonderful, because we do have one from Commissioner Cerulo. Commissioner?
Hi, thank you for the presentation. One question I posed at the review session on Monday involved whether or not the city was considering doing anything to create a little bit better of public realm and pedestrian experience outside this row of buildings. It is quite barren, and as you say, important in terms of the services being provided and the population of people coming to be served here. And I don't know, you know, I'm posing that to you to see if there's been any consideration of that. The photos that are reflected in this presentation, which we've also seen here, that the staff presented to us on Monday, are really representative of what it staff presented to us on Monday are really representative of what it looks like out there. It's clean, but it is completely stark. And whether that's planters or something else that just creates a better environment for the people who are coming in and out, and also the pedestrians that are experiencing walking past uh this sort of row of of buildings.
Um, thank you so much for your question, Commissioner. Uh, for this inquiry, I'm going to pass the mic to our colleagues at DCAST, uh, to Ms. Colleen O'Connor-Grant at DCAST Planning. Colleen?
Good morning. Uh, thank you, Commissioners. I'm Colleen O'Connor-Grant, City Planner, and I'm a part of the applicant team from DCAST. Uh, we're aware that the New York City Department of Transportation has purview over beautification projects, and just a few blocks away from this proposed site, the DOT has won such project at Victory Boulevard and Corson Avenue. Uh, it's through a DOT program, yes, called Community Commissions, lovely program around the city. Uh, we've reached out to DOT to obtain an update regarding uh any other community commissions or other beautification projects that may be happening in this vicinity, and we're waiting to hear back from them.
I appreciate that, and and obviously, we don't have the answer to that now, but would uh hope that the commission and the department would be informed of the results of those follow-up conversations.
Absolutely. We hope to liaise between this agency and DOT about beautifications in that corridor.
Thank you. One one additional quick question. I I realize that we, there are four different buildings that are part of the network, the HRA service network here. I don't know what the total, I know they're pretty much, I would guess, around the same square footage to some degree, although one may actually have, may go below grade, although it's not really below grade, but deeper into the ground because of how the grade of Bay Street is at this point. I'm just wondering, is all of the available square footage in these four buildings used? I I'm just trying to figure out whether or not there was any thought, if possible, of consolidating services into built into the buildings as opposed to having four buildings. I know they're all adjacent to each other, so this is not necessarily, this is burdensome for someone coming for multiple services, but I just wondered if there was a thought to that.
Um, I can take that question. Um, thank you. The buildings are compartmentalized, and HRA absolutely appreciates having one contiguous contiguous uh space to provide these sort of services. I've, we've done this um in, you know, our previous proposals in the last few years. Uh, unfortunately, the challenge there is, how do we renovate while we're occupied? Always poses a challenge. Um, so our ultimate goal is maybe potentially finding another location that we are able to do that and transition our services in that manner, in a more seamless fashion, so that we can continue to operate. Um, we continue to have dialogue with this landlord. We don't have um the entire space occupied. Uh, there are other entities within this complex, uh, but we'll continue to work with DCAST and landlords in the neighborhood to make sure that HRA is providing services in the best manner.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Sheikh. Uh, we don't have other questions for you, so thank you for being with us. Um, and I do not see members of the public interested in speaking up on this one, so we will close the hearing on calendar number seventeen and move on to eighteen.
Thank you very much.
Borough of Queens, calendar numbers eighteen and nineteen, one zero two five one, Queens Boulevard rezoning, CD six, calendar number eighteen, C two four zero two five zero ZMQ, calendar number nineteen, N two four zero two five one ZRQ, Public Hearing in the Matter of Applications for a Zoning Map and Zoning Text Amendments Concerning One Zero Two Five One, Queens Boulevard rezoning.
Welcome, Eric Pilatnik.
Good morning. Good morning to the Commissioners. My first time seeing you in the new year, and congratulations on the passing of City of Yes. We are here today, or I'm here today, to present to you one oh two dash fifty-one, Queens Boulevard, which is a well-supported rezoning that was supported at the Community Board, Community Planning Board Six, and is also supported by the Queens Borough President's Office. And we are scheduling meetings with Council member Lynn Scholman, and she has indicated that she is supportive of the application as well, and we're going to work out some details with her as far as to what else she'd like to see. In the interim, we're here with you today and representing the application for a rezoning from R seven one to an R eight X zoning district with a C two four overlay. Uh, just at the outset, I'd like to note so you could, the suspense is taken away. The City of Yes did benefit the building slightly. Uh, it increased the UAP by allowing the FAR for the existing to go up by one point oh FAR under the R seven one. Uh, that would bring it to around a five point oh FAR, and we're proposing to have an R eight X, which would bring itself to a seven point two FAR. So, uh, the rezoning is still helpful with the City of Yes. It is going to provide twice as many units in the building as it would under the as of right zoning, and twice as many affordable units. Uh, and the other thing I'll note before I go into any more detail is the parking was amended by the City of Yes as well, and there would be zero parking required, but due to marketability and the nature of the community in which we live in and the residents, there will be parking provided. We don't think that you could provide uh housing in this area of Queens and not give people the chance to have cars. They do tend to go out and travel and utilize their car despite their location, as Chair said a few moments ago, near Mass Trend. So, that's the essence of the of City of Yes and the changes it made. You can see the renderings on, you know, I'll stay here for one more minute because this tells the hotel. The architect to here did a beautiful job. Uh, he uh built it. He designed the building in this portion. I'll show you in the in the presentation. Queens Boulevard ramps around and curves upward. The building design that you see here takes root, takes note of that. You see a series of setbacks in the facade, and that's actually responding to the curvature in the roadway. Uh, and also the road goes up as you go along, and that's why you see the difference in elevation and the facade treatment. Uh, so that's basically, I just told you everything you really need to know about the application. I'll cruise through the rest of it, and then if you have questions, I'll be happy to answer it for you. Uh, as you can see here, it's supposed to be a seventeen-story, hundred and seventy-five-foot tall building. It'll have ground floor commercial of approximately eighteen thousand square feet. It'll have a hundred and sixty-six thousand square feet of residential space upstairs. The FAR will be at seven point one nine. It'll have two hundred and sixteen units. That's compared to about a hundred and twenty or so under the as of right. Fifty-four of them will be permanently affordable, and it'll include eighty-seven parking spaces where none are required. And the parking will be at the cellar level, and it'll be at the second floor level. Uh, go through, right now, the site is shown on the left. Uh, it's the biggest, uh, I'll go two more minutes.
Time.
See, on the left, it's a one-story building.
Let's pause for six.
I'll stop here. I told you the whole story, I think, in my introduction.
See if there, I I think there will be questions for you, so let's go to Commissioner Ramperchad and Commissioner Goodrich.
Thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Uh, the Community Board had three recommendations.
Yeah.
Line speaking towards that with regards to the number of parking provided for affordable units, also the rear facade. Can you explain what was shown to them and what changes are going to be made or possibly made?
Yeah, sure. I'd be happy to. Uh, we're not making any changes to the rear facade. Uh, there was concerns from expressed by the people next to us. I'll start there, behind the building, but we're separated quite far from those people. There's a rear yard between us. In addition to that, the same facade treatment you see on the front will be on the rear. So, it's, we feel that accommodated their request to the best we can. Uh, the real issue that came up at Community Board Six was the parking, and we're providing parking, and can we provide some sort of supportive housing in lieu of parking, grasping onto the idea, or playing off of the idea, that if you're not providing parking, there's a cost savings, that cost savings should be reintroduced in the form of some sort of supportive housing. Of course, supportive housing is its own genre of housing and requires HPD and other funding sources, so we're not doing any of that. And plus, we are providing the parking. We're not eliminating it voluntarily, but uh, so we don't really have the space. We feel if we eliminated the parking, uh, you'd have a less marketable building, so to speak, so.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Goodrich?
I was actually going to ask the same. Take a while to warm up. Uh, I was actually going to ask the same question, but focusing on the affordable housing part. Um, have you been in communication with HPD about?
No, we have not started any conversations yet with HPD. We will after the approval.
So, do you foresee that it's possible that, so the the community is asking, instead of parking, to replace that with more affordable units, fifteen percent supportive housing? Do you think that that's a possibility? Because what I'm hearing is?
No, I don't think it's a, it's not a realistic possibility for development like this. It's not being built with any sort of government funding, state, city, or federal. It's a forty-five X program building, and uh, the HPD involvement will be for the MIH units, of course, and they'll be instituted under a regulatory program, but regulatory agreement. But no, there's no proposal to have this building have any sort of HPD involvement with any sort of supportive housing.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sorio?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much for the presentation, and and thank you for addressing uh my colleagues' questions. I wanted to go back to Commissioner Ramperchad's questions. You know, this is a a topic that is um important, um, has come up in different projects. You know, there's been instances where, you know, the community has requested that, which is important, given the fact that even within the transit zone, access to parking is necessary in certain places. Now, this is a case where the community is asking you for, you know, the switch, and so I also understand that there's financial constraints. Um, and I'm wondering if you can help us understand, you know, the rationale behind your decision to to decide that even when the community is asking for less parking, more affordable housing, you're you've you've concluded that it will make the building more marketable to have more parking? And so?
Yeah, it's a confluence of a couple of different things. The parking issue first. Uh, obviously, you've been out there more than we have speaking to people. Uh, the City of Yes is law, but there's quite a few people in the City of New York, especially in the outer boroughs, that strenuously disagree with that. Uh, and although some of the conditions are here, there was also conditions expressed in support of having the parking here, and people were happy to have the parking. Uh, the developer has been working closely with the development that's gone up under a previous city planning approval at ninety-eight eighty-one Queens Boulevard, the Tower Diner Site that your commission acted on about two years ago, and every single parking space has been grabbed up in that building that was just recently built on Queens Boulevard, and there's a waiting list for parking now in that building. So, the residents in this portion of Queens, in the Forest Hills, Kew Gardens area, they do like their transportation. They like their cars. As far as the supportive housing goes, like I said before, that's in a genre of housing unto itself. It requires a building that has an efficiency to it and makes an application to HPD, and the financing gets tied up in that. HPD's timeline, last time I checked, was four to five years. Uh, as I mentioned, the people were developing this. Uh, ninety-eight eighty-one was approved by your commission a year and a half ago, two years ago. It's up in the air right now. Uh, we're eager to build the housing, and we're eager to do it right now. Turning, uh, changing the program within the building would not help that process at all.
Thank you. I appreciate your response. If if possible, and and really to address, fully address the the request that is being made by the Community Board. It would be great if you can respond explicitly with your rationale, and I would encourage you to share, like your pro forma and explain, you know, from a cost-benefit analysis, what is leading you to that? For us, it's important to understand, why are we not able to provide more affordable housing if all of a sudden, you know, we can riddle the cost of something like that?
Yeah, I I don't know if we could provide a pro forma for you, but we have met with members of uh your, of City Department of City Planning recently, uh, going through the impacts of construction costs, uh, labor costs that come with the forty-five X program, the labor demands that are being placed upon development from the local council people and other people, uh, that require certain labor unions participate in the development. Uh, all those factors combined don't lend to an easy spreadsheet, uh, and that's where I'm coming to you from. We don't have a pro forma put together yet.
No, fair enough, fair enough. Anything that you can share with us and with the community to help understand the complexity of the situation would be well.
I would, and and we'd be happy to continue on with discussions. We had a very enlightening conversation with with members of your Planning Department a couple of weeks ago, and we'd like to continue this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ramperchad?
Sorry, two more quick questions. I understand the parking situation over there very well, northern area, very well. Two questions I have is, looking at the 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 screen that we have right in front of us, you have eighty-five studio apartments proposed. Has there, was there any thought of changing that to make it more one-bedroom? But can you just walk through your?
The rationale behind the studios is, again, based based off the other development that's gone up down the block. It's just simply that there's a demand from young families that are just married couples that are just getting started, and there's a demand from seniors, and both of them are in a price point that the studios fulfill. Uh, so we are finding, people are finding that there's a demand for the studios. We can, we have not locked anything in stone, and the unit configuration can surely change.
And the last question is, what's the timeframe of this project, timeline?
Uh, we're ready to start, uh, pretty much as soon as, if we should secure approvals. All the attendancies have been advised. Everybody's.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, Mr. Pilatnik, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, everybody.
Uh, and I do not see members of the public wishing to be heard on this item, calendar eighteen and nineteen, so we will therefore close the hearing on those items and move on to the next.
Borough of Brooklyn, calendar numbers twenty and twenty-one, two five one zero, Conley Island Avenue rezoning, CD fifteen, calendar number twenty, C two three zero one two eight ZMK, calendar number twenty-one, N two three zero one two nine ZRK, Public Hearing in the Matter of Applications for a Zoning Map and Zoning Text Amendments Concerning Two Five One Zero, Conley Island Avenue rezoning.
Great, thank you very much, and uh, I see Richard LaBelle here with us at the podium, but I will also note that the applicant team includes Faiyan Betan, Kevin Williams, Yuri Menzak, Daniel Grinchain, and Amara Hernandez. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Granik. Commissioners, Richard LaBelle of Sheldon LaBelle PC for the applicant. Um, we're here for the twenty-five ten Coney Island Avenue rezoning. Uh, this is a rezoning uh by twenty-five ten CIA LLC, which proposes a zoning map amendment to rezone block seventy-one fifty-nine, uh, four whole lots and portions of two other lots within Sheepshead Bay from existing R four and C eight one districts to an R seventy C two four district. Uh, the applicant would also, of course, seek a text amendment in order to require mandatory inclusionary housing, mapping both options one and two. Uh, the action here would facilitate the development of the site with a new eight-story, roughly sixty-one thousand square foot, mixed residential and commercial building with roughly thirty-five dwelling units. Uh, this would include ten incomer-stricken units and would provide roughly thirty-five parking spaces. I'll go through the land use rationale as well as the proposal, and then I'm happy to answer any questions. The next slide shows the revised proposal. We went to the Community Board initially with an eleven-story building prior to the uh the implementation of City of Yes. Uh, since City of Yes, we're able to reconfigure the height of the building such that the bulk of the building can be fit within eight stories, which was a concern of the community and stakeholders. The FAR remains largely the same from five point five nine to five point five six. Dwelling units here were reduced uh to thirty-five units. Uh, parking spaces were increased by eleven to thirty-five. I know this question had come up from the commission. This was done at the request of many stakeholders who were anxious to have a one-to-one ratio of units to residences, uh, units to parking spaces in the building. Uh, this is a zoning map, uh, which demonstrates, I think, um, why, uh, in a large sense, this is an appropriate rezoning. You've got existing C eight one and R four districts along Coney Island Avenue, an extra-wide thoroughfare and major commercial thoroughfare in the area. Uh, it is an inappropriate district, given that the C eight one largely results in uh low density or um vacant use, uh, open uses such as the used car lot, which appears on the site. So, uh, when discussing lots which are underutilized or unutilized, uh, proximate to transportation and parks, uh, this is, uh, you know, a very, uh, you know, a really an excellent example of potential for a rezoning which can do a lot of good. Um, this is the proposed zoning change map, again, the R seventy C two four. Uh, we note the site in red. One of the benefits, of course, of the R seventy C two four is requiring ground floor non-residential uses, as would be here. And so, um, you know, this is the area map, which really demonstrates, again, why this is entirely appropriate. We sit on Coney Island Avenue, a hundred-foot-wide extra-wide street per zoning. We also are bordered by Avenue V, an eighty-foot-wide street, also a wide street per zoning, with two subway lines within walking distance, bus transportation along Coney Island Avenue, and uh open space within the area. This is an excellent example of a well-utilized site in terms of rezoning, and with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you very much. So, um, you started at sixty units. You're now down to thirty-five. You started at thirty-five. I'm sorry, you started twenty-four parking spaces, now up up to thirty-five.
Correct.
Um, go back to the um, the mechanism. I don't know if that was on the slide. The mechanism that you are now using, same zoning designation?
Correct, same R seventy C two four.
Okay, so this is a, uh, just a commitment that the developer is making as opposed to a propose that we, a a proposal that we change the dynamic here at the commission. Is that correct?
Correct, that's correct.
So, there's still, it would be an R seventy C two four, um, with, and I, is the maximum FAR for that?
Five point six.
Five point six. Five-point-six, okay. So, that would remain, the maximum number of dwelling units would remain, is that, was that sixty?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so, you're deciding on your own to build something smaller, is that correct?
Yeah, Chair, not necessarily that much smaller, in its square footage difference is a couple of hundred square feet. What we're doing here is basically offering a development which has extremely generous unit sizes, so the majority, indeed seventy-five percent of the unit sizes are a full three-bedroom. And we find this important for a couple of reasons. The first is that, as the commission is aware, pursuant to mandatory inclusionary housing, the affordable units will be in the same ratio as the market rate units, or the units generally. So, of the affordable units here, a full three-quarters of those will be three-bedroom. This offers something to people needing affordable units, which is really valuable, the idea that they can move into these generous unit sizes with space of, I believe, roughly sixteen-hundred square feet on average. The second thing that's important to note, within this community district, is between 2010 and 2020, pursuant to the prevalent Furman study, Furman Center study, of sixteen-hundred units of housing created in this community district in Sheepshead Bay, there were between AMIs of fifty-one to eighty percent, zero units of affordable housing created. And so, it is really a dramatic opportunity, even to create a small number of units. So, the fact is that despite the number, the overall number being small, these are healthy unit sizes for families, which will be able to utilize this building and to live, you know, in the entirety of this new development.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Crimani.
Hi, thank you, thank you for the presentation. Just, can you say a little bit more about Community Board Fifteen's overwhelming disapproval of the project?
Sure.
And did any of the changes that you've talked about address or respond to their disapproval?
Yeah, so, by way of background, Community Board Fourteen was one of the four community boards which had available to it the special permit under seventy-three-six-two-two, which has since been eliminated under City of Yes, which allowed for the increase in single-family homes for existing buildings. So, what I mean to say by that is they're very familiar with land use actions, and I've been going there for over twenty years. We made changes to the building design in a good faith effort to try to bring community members on board. There was, I would say, some inter-community board conflicts which arose, which kind of gave rise to the vote that the community board gave. They have approved similar rezonings at similar densities within the last three months on similarly situated streets, but for some reason felt that this building, which again creates, at the end of the day, thirty-five units, would somehow disrupt local traffic on Conley Island Avenue. I would use the community board's words from its own recommendation, "The board representing area residents are opposed to the rezoning of a commercially zoned area to residential use." First of all, most of it is already R four-one, so it would be R seventy, it would be residential use. So, they're opposing rezoning commercially zoned area to residential use, but then they note that Conley Island Avenue is a congested thoroughfare with heavy traffic, and a building of this magnitude would only exasperate these conditions. As of right at this site, you'd be able to put a sixteen-thousand-square-foot medical office building. What we're offering here is a building with thirty-five dwelling units. The idea that this is somehow going to have any sort of impact on Conley Island Avenue and the traffic is somewhat ridiculous and, in my opinion, disingenuous. And, you know, really, we were, you know, they were discussing a school across the street, which literally has thousands of kids, you know, the fact, something doesn't smell right. The fact that they're saying that this building, which would have ground floor commercial use and residential above, is somehow going to become a creative, or some sort of nuisance, and is going to draw people across the street to a mixed-use building, it just doesn't really hold a lot of water. So, I think that there were some things that were being discussed, and certain community members who were just opposed, and I really didn't understand the vote in that regard.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Goodrich.
Okay. There's a petition online, and I just want to review what they're saying. This is a quote, "This development has serious potential to undermine the quality of life of our community, adversely affecting the character and aesthetic appeal of our environment. Such large-scale developments typically increase traffic congestion, noise levels, and can put a strain on existing community resources. Studies show that out-of-scale developments can detrimentally impact the safety, health, and overall quality of life of residents, according to the American Planning Association." Response.
Yeah, happy to respond. So, this commission in 2007, within two blocks of this site, approved a non-contextual R six district, the Sahara rezoning in 2007, which would permit, you know, taller building heights than is proposed here. The commission here has repeatedly approved R seventy-C two-four districts on streets that are far more narrow than this street, so at least three rezonings, the seven-twenty-three to seven-thirty-three Myrtle Avenue, seven-oh-two and seven-fifteen Myrtle Avenue rezonings within Brooklyn Community Board Three, on a seventy-foot wide street. This is a hundred-foot wide street, also bordered by an eighty-foot wide street. What we basically are seeing in some of this opposition is what amounts to be somewhat of a property dispute. There's information, the record, that the school across the street attempted to purchase the property, was unsuccessful in doing so, and is now basically mounting opposition in light of that. And so, when you look at the actual land use here, and the opportunity to create affordable units in a district where, again, as I cited, in those ten years since 2010, created zero affordable units between AMIs of fifty-one and eighty, it really just, you know, the facts of the matter don't make sense. You're rallying against changing a commercial district to a residential district, but a commercial district would allow for far more traffic. The use itself right now is C of O'd as a rent, a used car lot. So, I really think that, I don't really connect to the opposition that was entered into the community board. And again, this is a community board that I've been appearing before. For twenty years, we've had many successful applications together, so, but I would ask the commission to just look at the plain facts of the matter and see that the opposition here makes no sense.
That's what I was wondering, because there have been some successful projects, so I, you know, I'm from Brooklyn, but I don't really go to this area as much.
Sure.
So, I was wondering, what is, what is it specifically about this project that is generating? Only three people in favor and thirty-three opposed.
On the community board vote, yes.
Right, on the community board, and that's an overwhelming amount.
Sure.
So, you're saying that there is a background of where the school wanted to purchase the property?
Yes, it's a property dispute.
Okay.
Oh, and just as a matter of good faith, the applicant here went to the school and basically made an offer for the opportunity for the school to utilize the ground floor, which needs to be non-residential anyway, for community facility space. And there were negotiations, there's documentation of those negotiations, where they'd be able to come in, utilize that ground floor. And then, the day of the hearing, that those discussions were abruptly cut off, and a petition was entered into against the zoning.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Soria.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much for the presentation, and thank you for addressing my colleagues' questions. I wanted to give you an opportunity to respond to the recommendation made by the Borough President in terms of the amount of parking. By first, but first, I wanted to just highlight my concern that, even though the property right now is not within an inundation area, the projections by the New York City Panel on Climate Change suggest that this is going to be extremely vulnerable to flooding, to coastal flooding. And so, you know, that is the context in which I want us to discuss excavating for parking. And so, on Monday, we had the opportunity to validate some of the numbers that the Borough President highlighted, estimating that, you know, the cost of underground parking here is up to sixty thousand dollars, and that the total additional costs can be as much as seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So, those numbers the department clarified come from their research on the City of Yes for housing opportunity. And so, first, I just wanted to understand, you know, what is your response to those numbers? At a moment like this, we should be using these resources toward more affordable housing in a place also that, as I just pointed out, you know, makes no sense to be excavating in the first place. So, help us understand a little bit, you know, the applicant's response to the recommendation by the Borough President. I think that you already hinted that the community here, you know, has been explicit about, you know, their position on this. I just want to understand, from your point of view, how does this make sense?
Sure, so, just by background, I know that we're located within the point-two annual chance flood plane instead of one percent, so we wouldn't be subject to certain building code compliance?
Now.
Now, correct.
But the projections show a very different...
Understood.
Yeah.
I'll be clear, I agree with you. And I agree with the Brooklyn Borough President. And oftentimes, when you're trying to create a project which is going to gain support in the community, there are representations that are made, and indeed, we're still open and are still even attempting to have those community discussions, and as ULR, you know, continues through the council, I imagine those discussions will be ongoing. So, right now, as the consideration goes, we'd be providing the parking and be providing those spaces on a one-to-one basis. Is it, is it, is it sound financially to do so, given the excavation cost? Probably not. Would the applicant have preferred to proceed without such parking? Yes, but basically, in an effort to come to the table and to try to have those community conversations, and again, creating affordability where affordable units are not the norm, we had those conversations and we made those choices. We now, you know, as has been noted, face a, you know, a community board vote against, and so, in essence, to the extent that there were changes and modifications that reduced parking, you know, I think that's something that we would consider. But, you know, obviously, there's so many different considerations and stakeholders here, that Community Board Fifteen, on this and prior rezonings, has made it clear that they want to maintain this high ratio of parking spaces, and that in order to gain their approval, that is something that applicants need to come to the table with. So, again, all of those things considered, on a going-forward basis, if there were, if the discussions evolved, I think we would reduce the parking, but we're just presenting to the commission what was presented to the community board and to the Brooklyn Borough President.
Fair enough. This is extremely useful, and thank you, I appreciate, you know, your transparency on this. Just one final question, just to clarify, has that potential alternative scenario been presented and explained to the community in terms of the actual, what you can do by actually reorienting the resources that would, right now, would go toward unrequired parking?
What we presented to them and what they understood was that it would be far more preferable to provide a scenario with, you know, less than fifty percent of the spaces being provided, and they viewed that as a non-starter in terms of their support. So, it would be a more feasible development plan and a, you know, better layout for us, but, you know, have we, I don't, I don't think that we've said to them, here's what it would look like with a, you know, with a drastic reduction, because they didn't even want to talk to us about that.
I would encourage you, if you can, again, share with us or anything additionally to what you've already done in that regard, just to understand what that scenario could look like. It could have, you know, important implications here and going forward. Thank you.
Understood, of course, and just to underlie this whole conversation, we are in support of and are often supported by council member discussions where they want to eliminate parking, and in those districts, when we go in, we know we can have a development that reduces or eliminates the parking in its entirety. But like, you know, again, there's certain areas that are cut out for that kind of conversation and ones that are not.
Fair enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Gold has his hand up in Zoom.
Commissioner Gold.
Hi, good morning, thank you. I just wanted to follow up a little bit on some of the discussions we've had with the other commissioners. There is, you know, it feels like there's something missing on the disconnect between the community board and, you know, community petition and what we're seeing here. And so, you know, certainly understand there may, as you mentioned, be a property dispute, but at the same time, you know, it's interesting to see that literally it looks like thirty of the community board members came out against versus three. So, you, I guess I just wanted to understand a little bit more, I mean, is height, was height a factor there as well, which you've adjusted? And, you know, to that end, can you speak about height in the neighborhood? Are there other buildings that's tall nearby?
Sure, so, there's an R six-A district to the north of the property that, as of right, would permit building heights reaching minimum of eighty feet, maybe even eighty-five feet. I think that in this area, if you took a hard look at the map, you'd probably find maybe six-story buildings, something slightly greater. So, an eleven-story building was a tall building. An eight-story building, not so. And so, the idea here to trade off and the opportunity to take an existing used car lot, produce housing and affordable housing, and provide massing, which really, as far as Conley Island Avenue, is appropriate. So, when we are before the commission and we talk about transit-oriented development, and what streets, avenues are, you know, are well-suited for additional bulk and density, this would be one of them. We are within walking distance of two subways, it's, you know, there's two wide streets, it just makes sense. So, again, while there's that discussion around height, I think that if you go into the record and dig into the nature, just reading, again, the community board recommendation, the fact that it is somewhat, you know, sets forth contrary statements within, and, you know, just looking at, really, you know, as someone who's, who went before the land use committee of Community Board Fifteen three times with this application, and each time was trying to come closer to somewhere where we could reach a state of, you know, if we weren't completely happy, at least a greater, you know, greater consensus, something doesn't make sense. And, you know, when something doesn't make sense as far as, you know, looking at a record and looking at these applications, you have to kind of dig a little bit deeper, and so my statements, you know, are what they are. We can provide documentation of that, but the truth of the matter is, you know, I mean, you can look at the community board actions, which approved similar building heights along similar avenues, and chose to support one wholeheartedly, I believe, on Avenue V and not here on Conley Island Avenue. You know, I think it's just, I think it's just, either record speaks for itself.
And so, just to that point, just so we can take a look at that, the one supported on Avenue V, which would be around the corner, is how close to this one and how high would it be?
I believe it was also an R seventy, which would have allowed for, in that case, I believe, nine stories. So, not, you know, within the same community district, not, you know, not entirely close as far as this intersection, but...
What block, if you can say? Because I know the area pretty well.
I can, I can reach back out to the commission and provide that information. I don't have it immediately.
Yeah, that would be helpful, because as you can imagine, I mean, Avenue V in some spots is commercial, in some spots is residential, right?
Sure.
So, depending on where you are on Avenue V, it's, you know, completely different.
I think it may be thirty-thirty-three Avenue V.
Okay, so, that's a, I mean, you know this as you say it, that's a different world, right?
Understood, absolutely.
It's Marine Park. Okay, got it.
Right, understood. I think it's more, I think it's more just...
So, anything, yeah, anything close, closer that, you know, that we can look at?
Sure.
No, sorry, no, it was just, as a, you know, when we talk about precedent, is there anything that was closer to this, right, to this neighborhood? And that's what, three or four miles away, right?
Yeah, I would note that in 2007, when the commission approved this Ara Restaurant rezoning, that their discussion was around the appropriate of massing of multifamily buildings along Conley Island Avenue. This is a mere two blocks north of the site, and, you know, we did that rezoning sixteen, seventeen, eighteen years ago. That was opposed at the time, and was eventually approved by the commission. So, you know, I get it, there's a push and pull, it's just whether or not, you know, whether or not an R four and C eight-one district is appropriate on Conley Island Avenue, and in this instance, we feel that there's a good argument that it's not.
Got it, okay. And then, one other, on the parking spots, I know there's been a lot of grand coverage, but, you know, the increase, was that in response to the community board or just the redevelopment to the, what sort of added the extra eleven?
It was in response to the community board.
Okay, got it, got it. Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, thank you, Mr. LaBelle.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, let's move on to a couple of members of the public who've signed up here. First, on Zoom, we have Teresa Scavo, be followed by Troy Olson here in the room.
Teresa, are you able to unmute your mic?
Good morning.
I am Teresa Scavo, I'm the Chair of Community Board Fifteen, and I am appalled at what I've just heard. just heard from the applicant. Basically, I had no idea about any type of proposal from the Yeshiva for this property. So to insinuate we voted the way we did because of whatever land use was mentioned is ludicrous. In the words of the applicant, the majority of the block in question is improved with one-to-three-story residential and commercial buildings. And as I am 100% sure, many of you commissioners have never even witnessed this block. A few feet south of this location is the 61st precinct. And as all of us know, parking around the precinct is a disaster. You could go there any time of the day. Cars are double and triple parked around the entire perimeter. If we go several hundred feet to the north of this location, it is an automotive repair and collision shop. He has unilaterally taken over every parking spot and utilizes the median for autos there for repairs as well as collision work. He has the Belt Parkway City Contract, has tow trucks constantly there, blocking the entire street. Going forward, the only proposed addition to this block is a four-story extension of the existing YDE Yeshiva directly across the street. I am not opposed to this particular project. The community board is opposed to the rezoning. We believe if we allow this rezoning, every property owner on that block will continue to do the same thing, causing more backups, more traffic, because as told to us, probably will rent on the ground floor to a supermarket. 35 parking spots is not going to handle a building plus a commercial space on the ground floor. Also, the Borough President's recommendation, he has never visited this community, attended any of the public hearings on this item. So how he put.
Time?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scavo. We appreciate you being with us. Um, okay, thank you. Let me move on to, um, Troy Olson. I'm sorry. Sorry. Ms. Scavo, are you still there?
Yes.
Great, hold on. We have a commissioner from, I'm sorry, a question from Commissioner Goodrich.
I just wanted to clarify, um, there was a part where you were talking about, um, he, and I wasn't sure if you were talking about the developer or someone else on the project, but you were talking about someone who owns all of the property, um, on the block. We were talking, you, you talked about the police, um, with the cars. I understand that. But who were you referring to when you were saying, um, he owns all of the property on the block? Or maybe I got that wrong?
Okay, Commissioner, I'm talking about Ben and Nino's. If you come to this block, which is several feet north of this proposed rezoning, it's a collision and automotive repair. I personally live two blocks away. Every single day, you drive down Coney Island Avenue from Avenue V towards Avenue U, you're narrowed down to one lane of moving traffic. He has every parking spot taken. The median is his reserved parking. The whole block is a disaster. That's what I was addressing.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Gold has his hand up.
Commissioner Gold.
Hi, hi, thank you, uh, Ms. Scavo. Um, so, just wanted to follow up. So, I think net, it sounds like, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, what you're saying is that at this point, the infrastructure that's there in the area isn't sufficient, in your view, to, to support the additional development? Is, is it, is it really that simple?
Yes.
Okay, got it, got it. And is that?
It's going to be a domino effect. We've seen, now, Mr. Lobel said all the places we've considered, and we have, McDonald's Avenue, that could sustain this additional building. Uh, Avenue V that he was quoting, that is nowhere near this Avenue V. We did approve, but those locations warranted housing. This location does not warrant housing.
Got it, got it. Um, okay, thank you. Thank you so much for, for clarifying.
Thank you again, Ms. Scavo. We appreciate you joining us today. Okay, let's move on to Troy Olson. Mr. Olson, welcome.
Good morning, Chair Grodnech, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Troy Olson. I'm the Legislative Director for Councilwoman Ina Vernikoff, who represents the 48th Council District in South Brooklyn, which includes the location at 2510 Coney Island Avenue that is on the agenda today for public hearing. On behalf of the Councilwoman, we are, uh, also appalled by the insinuation that this is a, a mere property dispute and bringing a school into it, I think was inappropriate. Um, Councilwoman Vernikoff is strongly against this proposal, this proposed project. This is a, a commercial corridor, and the tallest building in this corridor is, is four stories. There are considerable concerns in the community about this project, uh, related to its height especially, but also parking and transit issues and those concerns, concerns around, uh, the potential construction, and then the spiraling effect, as mentioned by Chair Scavo. The most important consideration here, though, is simply that the community does not want it, and that should still matter in this city. Community Board 15 voted against this proposed project by an astounding 33 against and only three in the affirmative. There are no corrections that could be made that would satisfy the condition needed here, which is community and neighborhood support. Let's not put things in a community that doesn't want it. If the community is really against it, we should not be pushing projects onto it. Councilwoman Vernikoff, in her time in office, has consistently held a policy of backing the neighbors and backing the communities most affected when it comes to anything land use or, or a proposed housing project. This community support metric simply cannot be met here, and it's not even close. The lack of any community support on this extends beyond the community board as well. The 33 community members on the board of Community Board 15 that voted against have no stake in this property. They saw it as not fit for this community. One of the last vestiges of neighborhooded community protection in this city is neighbors banding together and saying no to a project, having the support of their representative, in this case, Councilwoman Vernikoff, and other members around the city council, deferring to that member, that representative, and those communities and those neighbors. There are plenty other locations suitable for more housing in the city and across Brooklyn, uh, but not here. But thank you for your time, and Councilwoman Vernikoff sends her warmest regards.
Thank you very much. Before you go, let me just pose a couple of questions to you, and please send, uh, our warm regards back. Um, uh, you noted other areas in Brooklyn, maybe even other areas in the council district that might be appropriate or might make sense. Can you give us a sense, focus on the council district? I wouldn't, I wouldn't ask you to speculate on the rest of the city, since you're the Legislative Director of this council district. But tell us what corridors you believe Councilmember Vernikoff would support additional density in, in this neighborhood, just so that we can make note?
Well, there are other, um, I would say generally, I would cite, um, the Borough President was interested in more housing in Coney, uh, Island, which is out of the district, and this is Coney Island Avenue. Um, there are a lot of other areas of the district that would be suitable for more hous, housing, but a commercial corridor, uh, that has no buildings, uh, with height greater than four stories. Uh, that's not, that's not an appropriate area. I think, uh, even though she was opposed to City of Yes, I think City of Yes will gradually, uh, over time, add, add, add more housing. Uh, that opposition is of course still there, but there are, there are more suitable areas, and she has been, uh, supportive of, of other housing, uh, projects that, um, uh, throughout the district. But at, at the end of the day, it is primarily a low-density district. So the fact of the matter is, is the nature of much of the district, i- i- the housing additions are not going to be big projects, it's going to be very gradual. And you also have the fact that it's a coastal district. So you have the flood concerns, you have the environmental concerns. Uh, the top, uh, issue on a day-to-day and day-out basis really is parking, it's transit. So we, we have to fight to protect every parking spot and get more parking spot, because in, until the day comes where everyone gives up on cars, the reality we face is we need to prioritize not just housing, but also parking and transit, and, um, and the safety and quality of life and character of the neighborhoods and communities that Councilwoman Vernikoff represents in the 48th.
Thank you. I, I understand. I really was just, wanted to give you an opportunity to say what she would be for.
Yep.
I understand what she may be against, but I really wanted to give you an opportunity. I, I don't, I, you know, I think that may be worth further exploration here, but perhaps not today, because you, you gave us some, uh, food for thought about community board having a veto in this council district, um, from her perspective. Um, and I'm interested in knowing whether there is a size of building here, even on this site, that she would support.
Um, what it currently is zoned for, uh, as of right, it can be built up to four stories. And, uh, so what Chair Scavo, uh, recommended, uh, the, both the community board, uh, uh, and Councilwoman Vernikoff would be fine with that, and that already exists.
I see. So there is, there is no additional density that she would support here above the as-of-right scenario? Is that a fair statement?
That's correct.
Um, okay. All right. Let me go to Commissioner Benjamin.
Yeah, I'm also curious. Um, the applicant has added parking as a result of discussions or the vote of the community board. Does that make the project more palatable to the councilwoman? Or what, or would she rather support a four-story building with no parking?
Um, the additional, the parking being one-for-one in the project was great to see. Um, you know, that, that, that satisfies, that, uh, was not ever the top issue, though. The top issue really was the height and the possible cascading effects that the zoning change would have, um, with, with nearby developers, um, changing that, that corridor in that neighborhood. So the parking, um, very exciting to see, um, but, uh, ultimately not, not the driving issue, uh, in this particular project.
But in terms of the quote cascading effect, you do know that each one of those rezonings would have to come back here and ultimately back to the councilwoman, so you could look at each one of them on their own merits. Forget the cascading effect, looking at this project simply on its own merits.
Um, so you're saying if a, as it is right now, the potential for the parking not to be as good? That is, that isn't a, a potential risk, and, um, but the, it's outweighed by the driving factors of what is leading the opposition to this, which is the height of the building and, uh, also the, the fact that the community board, um, and the, and the residents, the neighbors there are against it.
And they'd rather have, if they had to have a choice, the current parking situation with cars parked on the median and cars parked on the sidewalk, and then a new building, this new building?
Correct. That, that doesn't mean some other, that some other proposal, uh, couldn't be satisfactory, but on this, on the merits of this particular proposal, yes.
And they'd rather have a four-story building with no parking?
Uh, the.
A four-story residential building that had no parking than this. I just want to make sure I understand my choices.
Yes, because parking is, is, while, while it was good to see that, it, it is not the top driving issue that, that led the opposition on this, to this particular proposal. Um, ideally, um, you know, as much parking as is possible throughout the district, where , uh, Councilwoman Vernikoff's always trying to find, we've been talking to city agencies, but, um, that, that is, um, overridden by these other factors in this particular instance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Goodrich?
Uh, some of what I want, some of what I was going to ask has already been asked, but some, I think, I, I just want to give you an opportunity to respond. Um, when this type of issue comes up where a community board votes overwhelmingly no against a project, and the issue is not about affordability, it's more about neighborhood character, um, it tends to be framed as the community is NIMBY, not in my backyard. Um, and these issues tend to be waved off, uh, in, in the midst of us having a housing crisis, which for me, you know, just on a side note, I, I, I think traffic and congestion, I think these are all very valid issues as planning commissioners we should all consider. But I wanted to give you an opportunity to sort of like just beat the punch and respond to that, because that is what it will be framed as, especially since this, um, council member also voted against, um, City of Yes, which I did as well, but, whatever. Um, yeah.
Um, so under, even before City of Yes, under current zoning, uh, there's enough, uh, theoretical possibility to build two New York cities. The simple fact is, is the city has not grown in overall population for a long time, and there's been a housing crisis for six decades. Uh, this is a very complex issue. Um, it's not going to be solved overnight, and I think there's a lot of other things at play that drive the housing crisis rather than, uh, so-called, uh, NIMBYism. Um, in this particular instance, I think, uh, to continually build up, and, and South Brooklyn has seen quite a few tall buildings, uh, in, built in the last 50 years, um, especially, uh, just outside of the district in the, in the 47th, there's been some. But, uh, that, and all of those buildings, the higher up you build, the more you're, you're adding to that congestion, this transit, and this quality of life issues. The reality is, is historically this, excuse me, historically this neighborhood is, uh, low-density and, and has many of the characteristics that you would associate with a suburb. And way out in the, in the district, there, there are streets that are still basically private to this very day. So this is a very, uh, to sort of, uh, from, from downtown Manhattan to say that everyone in the city has to, has to do a little bit more, um, I get it. And there are, I think, spaces for a little bit more, um, but not in this particular instance, in this particular project. That's a, I know that's a very philosophical answer, uh, but I, I felt it called for that. And I, I think, uh, I think this is, uh, um, a much bigger, bigger issue than we can solve on any one particular project.
Coney Island is changing, right? There's.
Which is in the, which is outside of the district.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, and then I just want, one last question, just to build off of the chair's question. I know we're talking about just this, you know, project, but I do wonder, in, in the, in a perfect world, what would this community want this particular site to be? It's not housing, it's not parking, what, in a, you know, what would it be? Would it just not change, or would it be something else?
Um, I, I mean, I think, uh, it, it, it could be a medical office, it could be, um, uh, any, any number of commercial, uh, possibilities. There's, there is a lack of a community center, um, in, in the district in general, that, um, would be nice to see, especially one, um, you know, we have, we have, we have a fair amount of senior centers, but there, but a community center, um, that sort of had multipurpose and could, could bring together young and old. There's a number of different proposals that I could think of that, that might be a fit, and whether it's a fit for, uh, developers, um, and the powers that be, you know, I don't know, I'm not prepared to answer that question. But in general, I, I, I think there have, under its current zoning, I think there are at least 10 better, better options.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Olson. Um, and, uh, when you, when you go back to, uh, Councilmember Vernikoff, uh, with our warm regards, please do remind her about the rent burden of her constituents, which is at 54.6% today. So we just encourage you to bring that back to her as well. Will do. Thank you. Okay, uh, let me, um, uh, see if there are any other members of the public wishing to be heard on this item. Okay, there are not. So we will close the hearing on calendar 20 and 21, and we will move on to the next item of the day.
Calendar numbers 22 through 31, Atlantic Avenue McFus Plan, Community Districts 3 and 8. Calendar number 22, C250014ZMK. Calendar number 23, C250015ZRK. Calendar number 24, C250020PQ, P, I'm sorry, PQK. Calendar number 25, C250021PPK. Calendar number 26, C250022PPK. PPK. Calendar number twenty-seven, C two-five-zero-zero-two-three, PPK. Calendar number twenty-eight, C two-five-zero-zero-one-six, HAK. Calendar number twenty-nine, C two-five-zero-zero-one-nine, PQK. Calendar number thirty, C two-five-zero-zero-one-seven, HAK. Calendar number thirty-one, C two-five-zero-zero-one-eight, PQK. Public hearing in a matter of applications for zoning map, zoning text amendments, acquisitions and dispositions of city-owned properties, Udap designation and project approval concerning Atlantic Avenue Mixed-Use Plan. Um, I have a notice regarding uh the draft environmental impact statement. A public hearing is being held at the City Planning Commission in conjunction with the above action to receive comments related to the to a draft environmental impact statement. This hearing is being held pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act and the City Environmental Quality Review.
Great, thank you. Madam Secretary, I have a lot of people on my list here who are signed up as part of the applicant team, but I do not know if they were all, if they are all actually part of the applicant team here. So I am going to invite um the team from the Department of City Planning to kick us off while we straighten out uh who's coming next. Um, welcome, Jonah, Jesse. Thank you for being with us today.
Great. Uh, good to be back, Chair and Commissioners. Uh, so we're we're pleased to return for today's public hearing. Um, today we'd like to uh quickly recap the the broader goals of the plan, give a brief refresher on the proposal, a certified, uh, and summarize uh the votes and ULP process to date. Uh, as we said a couple days ago, in short, AMAP represents an opportunity to re-envision an industrially-zoned area in central Brooklyn for a mix of uses anchored along a one-hundred-and-twenty-foot-wide corridor in close proximity to public transit and uh job hubs. Our aim is to create a holistic plan that supports housing and job growth with substantial amounts of income-restricted housing coupled with enhancements to the streetscape and public realm while addressing other infrastructure needs and priorities. As proposed, AMAP is projected to create approximately forty-six-hundred new homes, of which fourteen-hundred-and-forty uh would be income-restricted and rent-regulated, and over eight-hundred-thousand square feet of space for businesses with approximately twenty-one, twenty-eight-hundred jobs. To facilitate this vision, the department's proposing a set of zoning map amendments, zoning text amendments, uh, to map mandatory inclusionary housing, and establish a special district to improve the public realm and foster a mix of uses. And then in addition, uh HPD and DCAST are co-applicants for several site-specific actions, including uh Udap designations, uh acquisition disposition actions to facilitate housing on five additional sites. AMAP covers approximately twenty-one blocks along Atlantic Avenue, split between Crown Heights and Prospect Heights in Community Board Eight to the south and Bedford-Stuyvesant in Community Board Three to the north. Uh, Atlantic Terminal Barclay Center in downtown Brooklyn are about uh three or four blocks to the west. Prospect Park and Eastern Parkway are about seventy-eight blocks to the south, and the Nostrand Avenue LIRR uh station is less than one block to the east. Uh, AMAP builds on over uh ten years of outreach and engagement, including the M-Crown uh planning work from uh Community Board Eight and the more recent uh Community Vision Priorities Report from twenty-twenty-three, as well as additional outreach from twenty-twenty-four. For context, we want to remind the commission that AMAP is surrounded by areas either contextually rezoned or uh mapped as historic districts. While these actions have uh been important for preserving the built character, in particular uh the brownstone character that many of us love, they've also limited opportunities to grow and meet rising housing demand, um despite some growth along corridors or um large projects such as the state-led Pacific Park or Atlantic Guards. The M-one-one zoning in AMAP continues to be a barrier for growth, um resulting in much of the area since nineteen-sixty-one occupied by parking, storage, auto-related uses, uh and self-storage with although um there have been some uh mostly non-complying uh multi-story loss buildings adaptively reused for office and other uses. We estimate about eight-hundred private sector jobs are located in AMAP, uh with majority being in office, healthcare, retail, uh and commercial-based sectors, and about a third in construction, wholesale, uh manufacturing and other industrial-based sectors. From twenty-twelve to twenty-twenty-two, uh, we saw a general trend of a loss of industrial jobs as shown on the chart on the right, um, while jobs in local services and office-based sectors grew. Since two thousand and nineteen, uh, we also want to note that seven private applications have been approved in the area as well as three uh within a block. Uh, while these private applications have added much-needed housing, um, they've not been able to unlock the area's potential in a holistic way, uh which has been a key driving force behind our collective uh neighborhood plan work. And just a quick recap of what we've heard uh during public outreach, uh, here's um just a view of the AMAP uh Community Vision Priorities Report, which included priorities to create and preserve affordable housing, which has been a top priority, um, as well as promoting a mix of uses with density anchored on Atlantic Avenue, uh developing a street-wide um street plan with new open space for improvements to existing parks, and then uh supporting businesses and job training programs, um such as uh through various programs or by activating the Bedford-Atlantic Armory. Um, at this point, I'll just turn it over to my colleague Jesse to uh cover the proposal.
Thanks, Jonah. And building on the M-Crown Vision Report and from Community Board Eight and AMAP Community Vision Report, the neighborhood plan introduces a new framework and opportunities for capital and programmatic investments and expanded project area to create affordable housing opportunities beyond MIH on publicly-owned land. And so to support this, we have partnered with HPD, DOT and SBS, um, all who are here today. Um, the plan also features innovative zoning tools to incentivize job growth, urban design guidelines for Atlantic Avenue, and the first public space bonus expansion outside of the Central Business District. As mentioned before, to facilitate the proposal highlighted in purple, the department proposes a zoning map amendments and established the Special Atlantic Avenue Mixed-Use District shown in the hatched area, as well as zoning text amendments to apply mandatory inclusionary housing, or MIH. In addition, there are a few site-specific proposals in yellow, uh the the Udaps and the acquisition and disposition of city-owned land. I'll be using the next few slides to share the proposed zoning map amendment and tax amendments for the Special Atlantic Avenue Mixed-Use District. To achieve our goals and strategies, we're proposing a first zoning map change, trans- uh transitioning the underlying M-one-one zoning into five distinct uh density areas. Along Atlantic Avenue, we have the greatest opportunity for much-needed housing with the proposed C-six-three-A or an R-nine-A equivalent. Uh, moving to the north-south avenues like Grand, Claussen and Bedford, we propose a step-down to R-seven-D slash M-one-three-A density to serve as a transition from Atlantic Avenue and also as a north-south connector. Mid-block areas shown in the lighter orange would step down to a further to uh R-six-A slash M-one-two-A density to align with the existing context. The residential-only areas in yellow are designed uh to maximize affordable housing opportunities, particularly on publicly or nonprofitly owned sites. And finally, the Armory Site is in purple as proposed in M-one-three-A zoning, allowing the existing use to thrive while accommodating a potential future needs. The Special Atlantic Avenue Mixed-Use District would include special rules to ensure a uh lively streetscape along Atlantic Avenue and other corridors while supporting a mix of residential, commercial, community facility and light industrial uses. More specifically, along Atlantic Avenue, the special district aims to improve the pedestrian experience by requiring active ground-floor uses with transparency requirements and lobby with restrictions, while also setting the street wall back to achieve a wider sidewalk. Requirements for facade articulation, also while providing an incentive for open space to break up the street walls and offer new views and quality open spaces. In addition to MIH units, where uh we are including proposals that will, in an effect, to maximize opportunities for income-restricted uh housing. On top of the previously mentioned twenty-four-point-two million at St. Andrews Playground, the city is advancing immediate safety improvements on Atlantic Avenue and some surrounding intersections through a partnership with DOT, uh which we announced back at certification as a set of Street Improvement Projects, or SIPs, um to the neighborhood, which will involve neckdowns, crosswalks and marking refreshments. Uh, as mentioned at certification, AMAP includes various city-led programs and investments to support the increase in density and land-use changes. While long-term investments in the public realm and infrastructure are being considered, highlighted here are a few existing and ongoing investments, some of which are response to the recent outreach and reflected down payments on our commitment for a holistic neighborhood plan. These projects include area-wide HPD tenant and homeowner protection programs, as well as investments to AMAP streets, parks and infrastructure. AMAP is subject to a full EIS and racial equity reports, and as part of the environmental review process to DEIS, did identify impacts in the categories mentioned in yellow on the screen. Uh, mitigation efforts were mentioned as part of the DEIS and are being further explored in advance as part of the final EIS. During the ULP process, Community Boards Three and Eight, along with the Borough President, submitted favorable recommendations with conditions. And as is added summary, we're proposing a series of actions to re-envision an industrially-zoned area in central Brooklyn to support housing and job growth, coupled with public realm and infrastructure improvements. In total, um, all of AMAP will create forty-six-hundred new homes, approximately fourteen, a thousand four hundred and forty of of which will be income-restricted and spaced for twenty-eight-hundred jobs, while being a catalyst for capital and program uh based investments. Thank you, and that concludes the presentation.
Great, thank you very much. Um, and I am going to welcome up uh next the um our sister agency, HPD, as well as an applicant team that will include Amara Hernandez, Alina Farista, um, Tanya Martinez, Gregoryson Jack Lake, Kuzo Woodard, David Almonte, Emmanuel Demore, Cornelia Naravici, Miguelina Garcia, Olga Jove, Dash Henley, Tiffany Price, Rebecca Crimmins, Paula Diaz. How did I do?
Great.
All right, great. You have ten minutes. Welcome.
Okay, awesome. I was the last one. So, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Paula Diaz. Eh, I'm a neighborhood planner, let me a second, there you go. I'm a neighborhood planner in the Office of Neighborhood Strategies at HPD, and I'm joined by my colleagues, eh, Alina Farista, Director of Brooklyn Planning, and Amara Hernandez, Senior Planner on the Brooklyn Planning Team, as well as by the development teams of the Dean and Bergen eh projects that we're gonna talk about, and they're here to answer any questions that you have about those projects specifically. Eh, so my team has been working closely with DCP on AMAP, and I will be presenting on the overview of housing strategies that the DCP team referenced. So, let's see how it goes. There you go. So, what we heard throughout eh the community engagement process is that tenants and homeowners are feeling the pressure of rising housing costs, as well as the shortage of available homes in the area. So to respond to these concerns, we have multiple strategies to keep housing stable and affordable in the AMAP area, eh, and they are divided into these two buckets that we're gonna go through. The first one is creating new affordable homes, and the second one is preserving existing affordable homes and preventing displacement. Before we start, we just want to make sure that everyone knows what we mean when we say that some, how a home is affordable, and what we mean is that a household is now paying more than thirty percent of their income on housing costs. And also additionally, all the housing that HPD creates and that that we will be discussing today is also rent-stabilized eh which protects tenants from sudden rent increases and also income-restricted, which means that a household can qualify based on their income and the household size. So, as eh Jonah and Jesse mentioned, most of the new affordable housing in AMAP, which is over fourteen-hundred homes, will be part of the mixed-income buildings on private sites eh through mandatory inclusionary housing, or MIH. So in rezoned areas like AMAP, in exchange for higher density, the city mandates that between twenty and thirty percent of the units are set aside and permanently rent eh stabilized. These units are built by private developers but are administered by HPD and marketed through the Housing Lottery or Housing Connect. So who is served and the rents and incomes vary depending on which MIH option is eh selected, which is what you see here on the screen. For example, in option one, which is the most standard one, eh, we would have twenty-five percent of the units affordable at an average of sixty percent AMI, which in twenty-twenty-four is about eighty-one thousand for a family of three. But beyond MIH, the city is also building more deeply affordable housing on public sites. This map shows eh six public sites that are at various stages of redevelopment planning. Eh, first, the Dean and Bergen sites that I mentioned that the developer teams are here eh today eh, and they were part of a twenty-twenty-one MWBRFP that HPD did. Eh, we also have the ten-twenty-four Fulton that is Fulton Street that is a state-owned site that will be also one-hundred percent affordable. Eh, eleven-thirty-four Pacific, that is a previously city-owned site that is being redeveloped by a nonprofit and HPD is funding it. And finally, eleven-ten Atlantic and four-fifty-seven Nostrand, that are two sites that are owned by other government agencies that we're currently in conversations with them and exploring a possibility of affordable housing redevelopment. So we're gonna go through each of this. So first, first, the Dean Park Edge Project eh would include a hundred-and-fifty-one affordable homes for older New Yorkers, earning up to fifty percent AMI. It is designed with passive house guidelines, and we also have onsite social services and amenity space, as well as uh approximately sixty-five-hundred square feet new publicly-accessible open space that will connect the Dean and Bergen Streets. Around the block, the Bergen Green Project proposes an eleven-story mixed-use building with a hundred-and-eleven affordable homes, and this eh project will use HPD's extremely low and low-income affordable term sheet for households earning a maximum of eighty percent AMI, but two-thirds of the eh homes be will be affordable for households earning between thirty and sixty percent AMI, which is important. Eh, the project will also have passive house certification and energy efficiency design, as well as an approximately five-thousand-square-feet multi-use cultural, arts and recreation community center and twenty-three replacement parking spaces in the cellar for HPD inspection vehicles. Eh, the eleven-thirty-four Pacific Street eh site will also be an HPD finance project. It is currently a vacant thirteen-thousand-square-feet eh previously city-owned eh city-owned site. It is disposed, it was disposed by the city to the nonprofit Acacia in the nineteen-eighties to facilitate a rehab project, and in the past years, HPD has been working with Acacia Network, that is a social service provider and an affordable housing developer, to reactivate the site. Eh, in AMAP, eh, we included a site-specific acquisition and disposition actions eh to allow HPD to re-acquire the site, remove a deep this eh restriction that exists, and then transfer back to Acacia to build affordable housing. Eh, the same as the Bergen Green Project, it is also eh using the extremely low and low-income affordability term sheet eh, so it will serve households earning up to eighty percent AMI. Moving on to the eleven-ten Atlantic Avenue site, eh, it is a twenty-six-thousand-square-feet lot eh that is owned by the city but is leased by the New York City Transit Authority, and it is currently a cable repair shop and a storage adjacent to the Franklin Shuttle. The city is proposing an acquisition and disposition to allow for future redevelopment, and we're currently in discussions with the NCA about affordable housing potential on-site. And the last one is the four-fifty-seven Nostrand Avenue site, that is a thirty-thousand-square-feet parking lot owned by the Department of Education, and it's adjacent to the Brooklyn Adult Learning Center. Eh, the learning center will remain, and we're exploring the redevelopment only of the parking lot. Eh, we're proposing, the city is proposing a rezoning to R-seven-two, and we included also a disposition action to facilitate between two-hundred and two-hundred-and-forty homes, as well as a community facility space that will that will serve the New York City public schools. Eh, we're also being working closely with the Landmark Preservation Commission, given that the site is within the Bedford Historic District, and the Brooklyn Adult Learning Center is a landmark, so any future project will have LPC, will have to go through LPC Design Review. That's the first bucket of creating new affordable housing, and then moving on to the second eh bucket of of strategies, preserving affordability and preventing displacement and harassment are major goals for AMAP. Eh, here I want to highlight some key tenant-protection initiatives. First, eh Partners in Preservation, which is an HPD new anti-displacement program eh that committed three million dollars to fund local, central, Brooklyn community-based organizations to combat land on har- landlord harassment and support tenant organizing and coalition- to combat landlord harassment and support tenant organizing and coalition buildings in rent-regulated and at-risk buildings. There's also been a big call, a big call for legal services that we heard throughout the community engagement, to hold landlords accountable. So, the Anti-Harassment Tenant Protection Program got a seven-million of funding restored for legal services to address housing violations, harassment, eviction proceedings, and affirmative cases. This happened through City OFS, but even though this funding has been restored, we're also exploring additional possibilities for more funding. And finally, we have also partnered with CBOs and elected officials throughout the AMAP engagement to have organized know-your-rights trainings and housing resource fairs, and there's an upcoming series that we're gonna have in spring 2025 with classes on topics like Housing Connect and tenant rights. And now, finally, AMAP's goal is also to prevent displacement of low-income homeowners that are at risk of deep theft and scams, which is something that we also heard a lot from people coming to our workshops, and other challenges also navigating homeownership. And the key strategies here to achieve this are the city's renewed commitment to invest ten million dollars for the homeowner help desk citywide, which includes AMAP, and this is a one-stop shop for homeowners facing foreclosure, tax liens, deep theft, and any maintenance issues, and we partner with local CBOs to provide the support. And we also re, also recently relaunched the Home Fix Program that offers low or no-interest home repaired loans, serving three times as many households as before, for up to four-hundred-and-fifty per year. And finally, we also hold events and classes for homeowners in that upcoming spring 2025 series. We will have a class specifically to talk about deep theft. And I think that's me, that's everything. Thank you so much for your time, and we're here to answer any questions.
Great, thank you very much. Let me start with Commissioner Benjamin.
I'm pleased to see HPD's efforts and moving forward in conjunction with the rezoning and plans to incentivize that with city's void housing, but I'm curious about three things. The first is, in the Atlantic Avenue MTA project, how far along is the MTA in their planning for where they would relocate? It's difficult to relocate heavy-duty industrial uses, so I'm wondering where and how that's going to happen.
I think the, yeah, we're definitely talking to MTA about that. I know they recently, I think MTA recently announced that they picked a new location somewhere in East New York, I believe, for those relocations in one of their public areas, but I think in terms of, that's as far as they've gotten, I think in terms of what the next steps are, but we can definitely follow up with what they're.
Okay, because that also involves what the timeline would be for any relocation there, and when we're looking at even being able to construct, start construction on housing. So, I'd be interested in that information, how far along they are, and as a result, what the build year might be for the affordable housing. And in the first site, which was disposed of in nineteen eighty-seven, the four-story vacant building?
Yes.
Why has nothing been done on that site since nineteen eighty-seven, almost forty years ago?
I'm just having our, hold up, Commissioner, and we have our representative from Acacia to help answer.
Hi. I'm David Almonte, Director of Development for Acacia.
Please.
And that site has gone through a number of iterations of development, and we haven't been able to kind of, you know, get through the process. HPD, there was one time where we had another proposal, and HPD's timeline and funding was not available, and so, you know, we landed here.
So, what was the original proposal from nineteen eighty-seven, if you know?
There was, initially, we, we operate shelters as well as a nonprofit, and we were proposing to, because the, the site was initially, or was operated as a shelter from, from the previous developer, a previous owner. We were gonna put in another shelter in there, and we were.
A long-term shelter or a overnight, short-term shelter?
A, a long-term shelter, and we were asked not to because the armory is across the street, and so, you know, the, the proposed development grew, and, and this is what we're proposing now.
And the financing is, is available, again, what kind of start gate would we be looking for and build year on this site, which has clearly had some issues?
We are, we will be ready for development at the end of, of the year or early next year, from a design standpoint.
From a funding?
Yeah, the funding, HPD can talk about that.
Thank you. So, good morning, commissioners, so thank you for that question. You know, YULARP is the, is the first part of this, so we're glad that we're laying the ground for us to kind of get to the next part, which is financial closing. So, we'll be working with, you know, Acacia to get them ready. There are multiple things that, you know, kind of need to come into order here, various funding sources, and the city also has a limited capital budget, and we prioritize projects on an annual basis. So, you know, this site being part of a neighborhood study brings it to the higher up on our list, and so, we're committed to working with them to bring the, these units online as soon as we can.
What kind of horizon are we looking at for the, are we talking about them being able to close in FY twenty-seven? Are we, what, what is the horizon we're talking about for the financial closing? Can they, can Acacia hold together the private part of their financing that long? Or are we looking at a sustained period of working and reworking the financing in order to make Ella work on this site with the resources available and the other projects that may be considered?
No, I think, I think, you know, you're asking a great question. Unfortunately, you know, we can't commit to a specific closing timeline. You know, we work with, aside from city-owned sites, we have a number of other private sites that HPD is subsidizing as well. So, you know, this is a very long pipeline. I can't give like a fiscal year commitment to when that would be, just noting that this would be a priority site for us, and we hope to, you know, we would hope to close this as soon as we can. You know, the, the Ella pipeline is, you know, pretty large, and that's something that, you know, we can continue to come back and provide updates on as these projects get closer to that stage and, you know, provide those updates.
And if they don't close with Ella in a certain period of time, are they just put into the next year, or do they go back to the beginning and all the financing is reworked?
Typically, it, it gets pushed to the next year, you know, the project, because we would have completed a number of, you know, work, you know, to get it ready for closing, like the design, getting DOB approval, et cetera, and then we would just push it to the, to the next year when HPD is ready to close.
And you, okay. My last question, thank you for your forbearance, is you mentioned a number in the preservation of units and housing, you mentioned a number of, of preservation efforts for one-to-four family homeowners, but for building owners that own bigger buildings, which may have more violations and more problems, and particularly in neighborhoods that have suffered in the past from redlining and other things, the owners may not be able to obtain the kind of financing to deal with the violations and problems that may exist that would allow them to keep this, what is affordable housing, online. Are there any programs and has HPD been looking at how to help those kind of owners of properties that may be in distress but which you wanna, we want to preserve?
Thank you for that question. This is something that has come up before, to look at the preservation strategies, as you said, not only for small homeowners but other buildings, and we're definitely looking into this, and we're working with our preservation teams at HPD to see what else we can include in terms of like preservation for a broader set of buildings. So, thank you for that, and we can definitely get back to you on what else we have.
I would appreciate that, because particularly in this neighborhood, there are a number of structures that are five to twelve units that would not be included in your preservation efforts, but it would be good to know that we could help those people and preserve those units. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Reprochad.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the presentation. Questions for HPD, I believe it's slide ten and twelve, where you were talking about the homeowner help desk, the nine-point-eight-five million. Can you, two things, can you tell me how community outreach is done, and also, how many staffers would be dedicated to helping those who need help?
Homeowner help desk specifically. I don't know the number of staff members. I know that this is a partnership with the Center for New York City Neighborhoods, and that they collaborate with local CBOs. So, this is like a stagger approach. We have staff at HPD, then we work with the Center for New York City Neighborhoods, and then the outreach is done by local CBOs. I can get back to you on the number of staff specifically, if that's the question.
So, getting back to the outreach, do you guys reach out, besides on your website, do you reach out to local community boards, local civics? Is it, what's the, what's the, I guess, the process typically?
Yeah, the, I know that there's the one-on-one counseling is one of the biggest features for the homeowner help desk, because the idea is that people can come and have one person directly talking to you on like troubleshooting, whatever, that you're, like you need help with. The canvassing, I know that, besides working with the local CBOs, I can get more information on how the specific, how that looks, for sure.
Thanks for the, the presentation and the updates on the affordable housing strategy, and again, just want to echo Commissioner Benjamin, it's great to see the department coordinating closely with HPD. I just had a couple of questions on some of the sites. I think when, when the application was certified, there was, there was a few sites that are analyzed in the EIS as potential development sites that weren't included in disposition actions that are public sites, and I asked about then, I don't think there was a follow-up there, so I just wanted to probe a little bit. One of them in particular was a surface parking lot owned by the City of New York on Atlantic Avenue, which seems to me at least worth including as a disposition action, and then maybe later on, as DOE figures out what its long-term plans are, hopefully affordable housing. I wanted to understand kind of where a couple of those sites stood.
Thank you for that question, Commissioner. So, I believe that those are referencing two Department of Education sites, one on Carlton Avenue and Atlantic.
Yep.
And another further to the east by Brower Park.
Yep.
On New York Avenue and Prospect Place. Unfortunately, I don't believe we have much of an update to share. We know that that's kind of wrapped up in larger conversations with City Hall and efforts by the council members to kind of unlock those sites' opportunities, but at the moment, we're just, we're still exploring those, we're not including them in our land use application.
Right, right. I guess, I think what I'd hoped for was, was that those would be included, so we have to avoid a future land use action, which adds to the delay for housing development on these projects, and so, it's a little, I'd say disappointing to not see that in this application. To me, I think the logic of it is, it doesn't preclude the city from continuing to use it as a parking lot if that is the highest and best use, but it allows for the opportunity for affordable housing. So, I was hoping to see that come together in some form. On the MTA site, can we just talk about that a little bit? So, it's split MTA and City of New York with the MTA leasing, the City of New York piece of it, did I get that right in terms of ownership?
I'll let HPD respond, but I just want to really quickly clarify for the record. So, the, the two DOE sites, one of the reasons why those are included is because they're, they're actively used today. So, one, one is a, a special needs school, the other is a, I believe, like an annex, and has it, so, so I just wanted to.
No, understood. I think, I think the point I was making is that it's a one-story building along Atlantic Avenue that's city-owned with surface parking lot on Atlantic Avenue, and that including a disposition action would in the future allow the city to rethink that site when it could find a, an alternative location for DOE and avoid the additional year, year and a half of processes to do that.
Understood, but we'll definitely get back to you.
And yes, the specifics of the MTA site is that it is a city-owned, but it is part of the city master lease that the MTA leases from the city.
Got it, so the, the entire site is city-owned?
Yes, that, exactly. And then to the, to the left of Pacific Street in that slide, that is an MTA-owned site.
Sorry, that, that's what I was trying to get at. So, just to sound clear, so the, the city-owned portion is the MTA cable repair shop and storage?
Exactly, yes.
And, and the piece along Atlantic Avenue?
That's also, that's ours.
That's also city-owned?
Yes, everything that is like in the, in the diagram with higher.
And then the MTA-controlled piece of the site?
It's to the right of, of like, towards, in between Pacific and Atlantic, between Franklin, the Franklin Shuttle and Franklin Avenue, that other piece.
Which is immediately adjacent, just immediately to the east, you're saying?
Yes.
And what, what's, what use is on that site today?
I think that's vacant, that one, or is?
Yeah, I think it's.
Oh, yeah, the, the other MTA-owned, oh, oh, the MTA-owned lot, yeah, I think they're using it for parking, just surface parking right around the store, yeah.
So, familiar line of questioning, probably. Have you all had a conversation with the MTA about releasing some of its parking along Atlantic Avenue here in Franklin and folding it into a development site that would make it, you know, more useful?
Yeah, these are all ongoing conversations with MTA. We've definitely, MTA has definitely shared some interest in figuring out what to do on that lot.
Okay, but is there a, is there a action in this package that would allow for the city to develop that as affordable housing if the MTA were to comply?
I'm being told it would go through the GPP process, so technically not part of YULARP. So, no, there is no action currently as part of it, besides rezoning the area.
No, right, I, I'm sorry for interrupting. I guess the question is, is there an acquisition action that would be needed if the MTA were to say, hey, City of New York, we'd love to give you a surface parking lot to make an affordable housing site more squared off?
So, the MTA intends to have a, a separate RFP for that site, like they have their own state-led, because it's, it's owned in fee by them, so that, that's what they've, they've indicated to us. As part of a POA, there, we may include something about the site, but MTA is expressing an interest in having that be kind of a separate, separately developed.
Okay, yeah, I'm not, I'm sure the MTA has its own logic. I guess I, from my perspective, have a hard time seeing the logic of two separate city or public RFPs adjacent to one another and not a huge area, that it just seemed like from an efficiency standpoint, we want to figure out what, what does the MTA need, what does the City of New York need, how do we do one RFP and have a contiguous development site that makes some sense, because it's going to take forever otherwise. So, we just encourage that conversation with the MTA. Just again, traveling along this sort of city-state collaboration sidewalk for a second. So, it's great to see the ESD participating, it's nice to, again, to see the city and state collaborating on some of these affordable housing. It's a question I asked at certification again as well, again, the, the biggest public affordable housing site opportunity here is Atlantic Yards, which continues to be a vacant site at the corner of Atlantic and Vanderbilt. So, I'm just, I'm curious if there is any part of this process that is helping to nudge some resolution around a vacant train yard site, and, and what's, what the status of that is?
Yeah, I don't have a, I don't have an update on that. The conversations with ESD have been focused on the ten-twenty-four Fulton collaboration and like figuring, figuring out the financing between HPD and the state, so I know that Atlantic Yards has come a couple, comes up a couple times, but this is not something that we're like actively collaborating with the state, if you know what I mean, yeah.
Okay, again, you know, there's some opportunities here, it seems like, to make this a little bit more, again, to strengthen a lot of the work you've already done, and again, I'm appreciative that, that there's as much energy has been spent on focusing on all of these sites and getting really granular with them. It seems like on the MTA collaboration, on the ESD collaboration, and then also on the DOE collaboration, to think about long-term these sites, so it doesn't take, you know, twenty years to get some of these sites unlocked, but, but more near-term. So, I think those are my, my questions for HPD. I'm gonna come back on DOT, but I don't want to.
Now would be the time before we go into the public testimony, so if you have a question for DOT, I think they are here to answer a question, is that correct? DOT, let me confirm.
Yes, I was just saying that they, they were planning to testify separately.
Okay, so we'll wait. We'll wait till that, okay. Thank you, and we're gonna get to public comments in a moment. Commissioner Osorio, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much to all of you. The, I, I want to express again something I had said before, which is building on what my colleagues have said, but also. but also having been part of the tour, the briefing that you did, and seeing how you present your different strategies as a comprehensive plan is encouraging and it's, it's important. I also want to commend the department for taking on something that, you know, it's, we know it's complex and in many different ways necessary. So, thank you for that. I just wanted to quickly, at the review session, we had a chance to discuss with the Department of City Planning some of the industrial retention components of this. So, I want to focus really quickly on some of the very specific housing questions. So, for HPD, I'm wondering if, if, you know, what are your thoughts on the proposed MIH 3.5 option that has been put forth by the community board and by, echoed by the borough president? I mean, would love to hear any, your response, you know, at this point, but also explicitly, I want to understand if this is going to be fully analyzed in the FEIS. I, I would expect to see, like, that really been taken seriously just to understand, you know, the feasibility of it, but also, so like the financial potential implications for this.
Yes, thank, thank you, Commissioner. So, modifying the MIH options is not part of the, the scope of this rezoning and study. However, you know, with the City of Yes, option, MIH option three, the, you know, is available to be mapped on its own. You know, the city can consider that and support that if that is the preference. And, you know, I would just say that the, the various MIH options that, you know, are part of the text were put together after a lot of, you know, study on market conditions, financial feasibility. The general idea is, you know, the higher AMIs come along with higher number of overall units to cross-subsidize the deeper affordability. So, you know, that's, you know, what we have right now, the tools. We also have other tools to help, you know, fund affordable housing like 45X and other tools overall. So, you know, we're, we hear like the concerns just starting where we're at right now with the process.
Thank you, thank you. I just want to go back to your, your response, thank you. And, and I appreciate that you're, you sharing your thoughts at this point because, you know, you're just, I guess, analyzing some of what is actually being shared with you. But on the, on this being outside of the scope of work, are you referring outside of the impact study? Is that, is that what you're saying? Like outside of the SCER, the scope of SCER? Because I, I would, I would argue the opposite.
I'll, I'll just sort of DCP on, on.
Well, just, just to clarify, what I mean is, I think that there could be an opportunity because also of the specific conditions of this community to consider that level of analysis within your final EIS. I wouldn't necessarily think, and maybe you could explain to me if I'm wrong, why this would be outside of scope.
So, I'll, I'll just say that as, MIH is a citywide policy.
Fair enough.
And I don't think we yet have the tools or capability to modulate based on very micro-local neighborhood financial considerations. I do want to echo the, the City of Yes change to the standalone deep affordability, which is a, is a great new tool that, that we have and is an option here. And we've heard loud and clear from the community board about deep affordability as a goal. And I would just note that in addition to the public sites, we are going to go well above and beyond MIH in total and can reach significantly deeper affordability on, on public sites.
I agree with you on, on all of that. And I appreciate the clarification in terms of, you know, thinking about or redesigning MIH as a whole, given exactly how you framed it. It's just that I think that in terms of the actual proposal and the scope of, of the, of what has been, what is under review right now, there's nothing that prevents, I think, us to fully analyze, you know, what would that level of, of, or that configuration could actually sort of like look like. I think it would be important to just, in any case, fully address that recommendation. It sounds to me that it shouldn't be taken sort of like lightly. I think it's, it's needed and, and the way in which I interpret the recommendations that have been forth is that the current MIH framework is not responding to the needs of this community. And that's what I, I'm hoping that can be fully analyzed in terms of, you know, FEIS.
Sure. Well, I'll definitely check with our council and environmental review divisions. I just, I will note that the, the underlying concern that was also raised by HPD is that there is a financial feasibility and it's also tied to the property tax, the state-level 45X, previously 421A, that if, you know, the MIH requirements go too far, you're limiting new development completely. And I think that's, that's just an overall concern as well. So, there's, there's the technical scope question, but there's also just the feasibility. And just want to put that out there for, for the, for the public discourse as well.
Thank you. I, thank you for that. I have another question that has to do with recommendations, primarily again, from, put forth by the CBAID on providing additional tenant legal representation, but also the creation of the Tenant Displacement Registry and Housing Preference Program. I, I want to, I want to understand what are your initial thoughts on this? Is this something that you're considering, something that we can again, see fully analyzed in the FEIS or as part of?
And before you respond, Commissioner, let's put out all your questions now. Let's give them a chance to respond. We've got to get to the public. If you have others, let's put them, put them out now so that they can do them all together, if you don't mind, because we've got to move on.
Absolutely, thank you. So, in terms of, this is I think more of a question for the department on open space. I, I commend you on, you know, being creative in terms of creating this new incentive. I think that this can go a very long way. But in addition to incentivizing the private sector to create additional open space and given the fact that, you know, despite the proposal doesn't, is not expected to result in a reduction in open space, this area of the city is way below the standard of open space, you know, per inhabitant. So, I'm wondering if you can clarify, what are the actual commitments, city commitments, to increase the open space system over here? Then in terms of the sustainability measures, I'm wondering if, you know, again, commend HPD for maximizing energy efficiency in your developments. But I'm wondering in terms of the larger, the new buildings, whether or not we're going to be requiring the same energy standards? And then finally, in terms of economic development, I just wanted to make sure that, or ask if, if there's going to be a response, specific response to, you know, 12-plus recommendations that are being put forth associated with guaranteeing public resources to support potential displacement of businesses. I know this is something that we talked about on Monday, but I'm wondering if there's could be, if there could be a response in terms of, you know, from the city's point of view, not just the department, what is actually being considered?
Great, thank you, Commissioner. So, we had the first question plus open space, sustainability measures, and displacement of businesses. So, you guys can be the quarterback and decide which agency is best for each and then we're going to move to two council members that are waiting right now to testify. Thank you.
Just, thank you for your questions. The first one about the increased legal representation for tenants. As we said, thanks to City of Yes, we got part of the funding back, $7 million, which is a lot. And this is something that CBAID has called for directly, specifically for the anti-displacement program to come back. So, beyond that, we're exploring a little bit more, like if there is any opportunities to have resources for AMAP, which is part of the question, just like there, this is fine city-wide, but what are the resources here? And we're actively exploring what else we can do. Also, understanding that that $7 million commitment is a huge step forward. That's on one side. And on the other side, for the, I think you're referring to the risk of displacement registry that they also proposed. This is something that I, I know that it came up in certification too and that we explained the limitations that we have as a city in terms of community preferences, community preference being a challenge on the basis of fair housing laws. And this is something that was like aligned with that, like answer. This is something that would be at the micro level, they want that, their right of return kind of for that community. So, we have the, the same limitations there, but it's something that we're taking seriously. All the CBAID conditions and also the BP conditions, we're thinking about this as we move towards the points of agreement stage. So, this is something that we're analyzing and being able to give like a response on why, yes or not.
Thank you.
No, no, I'm just, yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And then just not, to not take more time here, but if you can provide additional, you're in writing, kind of like what's your rationale in that regard or the limitations, then I would appreciate that.
Yes, for sure. And I think DOT or DCP.
So, I'll just quickly respond on the open space and definitely recognize the need for new and improved open spaces. Just want to call attention to the early investment in St. Andrews existing open space, which is getting completely renovated. Over $24 million have been allocated to that and that work is underway. In addition, noting that the community board and both council members have identified open space improvements to existing open spaces that they'd like to see committed to as part of this. And we're working very closely with, with Parks Department and DOT on identifying potential capital allocations for those as well.
Thank you. Just quickly, those are improvements to existing open spaces?
That's correct.
What about increasing the open space?
So, that, I think that's actually, you know, part of the trade-off on public sites is between affordable housing and open space. I think we are working to try and balance that, to maximize affordable housing on public sites and then reinvesting in existing open spaces. I, like, the, the private open space, the Plaza bonus is a new innovative tool. I think we're, we're trying to see if that can be something that to implement as well for new open space. But again, there's, there's kind of these trade-offs between public sites and, and right now, we're trying to maximize affordable housing on those.
No, no, fair enough, fair enough. And I, I just want you to be mindful about it and encourage you to do as much as possible because increasing the density needs to go along with increasing all these other infrastructure requirements. Otherwise,
Yep.
you're depriving a community that is already lacking open space.
I'll, I'll also note at the Dean and Bergen site, oh, is that, okay, great. The Dean and Bergen site that HPD is working on has also identified some onsite open space improvements. We, we touched on that slightly, but that would act as an expansion of the existing Dean Park. Yeah. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Murrin?
Yes, thank you. I have more of a request than a question. It's directed to HPD. And while not the focus of the, of this proposal, is directly related to the proposal. Alina mentioned cross-subsidization and for, for a very long time, that concept has been a theory or, or a concept that you can't grasp because there is no definitive amount, a percentage that is allocated to this concept of cross-subsidization. So, if HPD can put something in writing that defines what their, this definition of cross-subsidization is, that would be greatly appreciated because I know I have questions about it. Several council members have questioned this and there's really not been a response provided. So, if you can do so, I would appreciate it.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioner Goodrich?
I just wanted to follow up on Commissioner Osorio's question about the affordability. It's my concern as well. I know the area very well. I vote this out. If MIH goes too far, it limits new development. I just wanted a little bit more background about what that means.
Okay, anybody can answer. The question about MIH and the, I think Alex made, I think Alex made the point before. Yeah, go ahead, Alex.
So, yeah, so the, the, fair question. The intent of, and this goes to your question as well, which was about the necessity of market rate housing to cross-subsidize onsite affordable housing. You know, part of the original financial analysis, which was undertaken for, for MIH, looked at citywide, basically market rents as it relates to cross-subsidy of, of affordable housing rents. And in combination with property tax subsidies, then at that time was 421A, now 45X, there is this balance across the city that, that basically this financial study identified, which that there, because it's self-subsidizing, there's a limited amount of housing, either on the, the deepness of the affordability or the total unit count, that can be cross-subsidized on its own. Which is why for like public sites or HPD term sheets, they can go beyond that because there is additional public subsidy. The concern is that without that additional public subsidy, we're, we're asking the, the private market rate units to provide that. If you go to certain higher levels of affordability, it just may not make sense to pencil out for new development and then we just don't get any market rate housing, we don't get the affordable housing on the private sites. And that's the high-level concern.
I have another question. With this new administration, presidential administration, we are now looking at cuts, you know, from HUD and that would affect, that we, potentially, right? We, for example, in the, in the last week, there were a lot of concerns about Section 8 not being paid, questions about privatizing certain governmental units. And I wonder if there's been any reconsideration about what it would look like if, on the federal level, there are cuts and that trickles down to very vital subsidies like Section 8 and other types of housing? You know, we're talking about eviction prevention, but there's also another sort of like elephant in the room that I, I don't think we've addressed, which is, you know, what happens where we have less people, now less people who are, well, not less people, the same amount of people even more who were relying on certain funding sources that aren't there anymore. And this is the area where that would happen in. So, I guess what I'm wondering is if there's any reconsideration to the deep affordability just because of, in the last month, really? You know, that people are extremely, people were, we already had a housing crisis, but, you know, people are really worried and they're looking at New York, which is already unaffordable. But, you know, they're, they're looking at some kind of what, what, what resources we have here. And I, and I mention this because we were talking about the Borough President's recommendation about eviction prevention. And I'm also thinking about other, you know, other types of safeguards that we can look at and if that could be part of this project.
I, I share your concerns and, and I think we'll, we'll get back to you on the relationship with the federal, the federal funding issues. I, I hear you.
Right, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, thank you very much to all of you. We're now going to move to the next stage of our public hearing and we're going to start with, we have two council members who are signed up to speak, starting with Councilmember Crystal Hudson on Zoom, followed by Councilmember Chi Ose, also on Zoom. Councilmember Hudson, if you can hear me and you are able to unmute yourself and join us, we look forward to hearing from you.
Sorry, I, I just was elevated to a panelist, so I missed, you called my name and I missed anything else?
I, I did. You are elevated and welcome. Good to have you here.
Thank you so much. Happy to be here. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Crystal Hudson and I'm the council member for the 35th Councilmanic District, which includes the neighborhoods of Prospect Heights, Crown Heights, Fort Greene, and Clinton Hill. I'm here today to testify on the Atlantic Avenue Mixed-Use Plan, also known as AMAP. New York City is facing an unprecedented housing crisis. Rental vacancy is at just 1.4% and housing prices are at an all-time high. This crisis is fundamentally reshaping our communities. Families who have lived here for generations are being pushed out due to rising costs and inadequate government support. That's why I've stood alongside my colleague, Councilmember Chi Ose, throughout this process to advocate for this community-led comprehensive rezoning plan. Each of our districts is unique, but we share a history, challenges, and priorities that must be reflected in this plan. AMAP is a result of years of community advocacy. It has the potential to transform Atlantic Avenue and the surrounding area, turning vacant lots, self-storage facilities, and gas stations into a vibrant mixed-use neighborhood with deeply affordable housing. I want to thank the community advocates who have spent a great deal of time discussing and improving on this plan. I'd also like to thank the city council's land use staff and the Department of City Planning for their work on ensuring AMAP becomes a reality. And while I'm here to voice my support for this proposal, I do want to be clear that we still have more work to do to ensure this proposed plan meets the goals outlined in our Community Vision and Priorities Report and delivers crucial benefits for our communities. First, the community has been clear that AMAP must go beyond the mandatory inclusionary housing requirements, increasing the supply of deeply affordable housing through both new construction and stronger preservation investments. And we can do that by leveraging every potential city-owned site in the area, including the Department of Education sites at 457 Nostrian Avenue and 510 Claremont Avenue. We must also expand resources for existing longtime tenants and homeowners to ensure they can remain in their homes without concerns of predatory practices as this corridor develops. Most notably, we must secure dedicated funding for legal support for tenants facing eviction or experiencing landlord harassment. Second, we must secure a fully funded commitment for a comprehensive redesign of Atlantic Avenue, one of the most dangerous corridors in the entire borough. We have a once-in-a-generation opportunity to make Atlantic Avenue safer for all road users. This commitment should include a clear time This commitment should include a clear timeline for establishing and finalizing the redesigned scope, including a public engagement process, and a clear commitment that would fund the largest project scope. We cannot add thousands of residential units to Atlantic Avenue without ensuring those new residents have a safe street to live on and without improving side streets as well. Moreover, there are numerous parks and playgrounds in the community that are also in need of improvements, like Lowry Triangle, Underhill Plaza, Dean Playground, and James Forton Playground, and will see increased use amid a large influx of new residents. Third, we must strengthen mixed-use zoning to support local businesses, the arts, and community spaces. AMA aims to create a diverse and vibrant mix of uses, including jobs, essential services, local retail such as grocery stores, community facilities, creative and cultural spaces, and light industrial businesses. However, unlike the nearby Special Gowanus Mixed Use District, AMA currently lacks the tools needed to ensure these outcomes. We should consider modifying the special mixed-use incentive to more narrowly focus on these key uses for all of this, for all or part of this corridor. And we must secure funding for programming and investments to provide light manufacturing training and business development for prospective tenants and local residents who need training to work at these new businesses. I look forward to continuing our work together to bring much-needed housing and public realm improvements to Central Brooklyn. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. We really appreciate your being with us and also your incredible partnership throughout this process. I have two questions for you and then I'm going to see if my colleagues have any. On the subject of Atlantic Avenue redesign, you noted that in your comments, can you just give us a sense of what your vision looks like for that or what some of your goals might be?
Specific to the street improvements or the?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I think what we need is a safer Atlantic Avenue. We hear from constituents all the time about how scary it is to cross Atlantic Avenue. This is the only stretch of Atlantic Avenue that is six lanes, whereas the rest of Atlantic Avenue, both to the east and west of this particular corridor, is four lanes wide in terms of traffic lanes. And so, you know, we want to see a corridor that encourages and fosters more people to cross safely and comfortably across the neighborhoods of Crown Heights and Prospect Heights into Fort Greene and Clinton Hill. I think right now, Atlantic Avenue really serves as a barrier and more of a border between those districts, those neighborhoods than bringing them together.
Okay, thank you. And on the subject of the non-residential uses and new development, obviously, we're talking here about a mix of uses throughout the AMA area. And you, in your comments, made reference to a desire to ensure that there are some non-residential uses that exist here. Could you just help us understand what types of businesses and jobs you envision when you say that?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're looking for more than just simply housing and retail. You know, we'd like to see a vibrant mix of uses and jobs that incentivizes arts, light industrial, community facility space. There are so many great, you know, industrial, light industrial businesses in the area already, and we want to make sure that those uses are preserved and maintained and that we can welcome more of them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Question from Commissioner Benjamin.
Hi, Councilmember Hudson. Thank you for all of your work and all of your comments, and as you know, you're my council member, so I particularly appreciate it. My question is about Grand Avenue and all of the automotive uses that are there. Do you believe that those are activities that employ people in our community and can they be incorporated into the AMA program designs or do they need to relocate?
They definitely employ local folks. I've been in touch with many of the local businesses on that particular corridor, and I think there's a mix of interest there. Some people, some of those businesses are, you know, second and third generation auto-mechanic businesses where the kids, you know, are interested in creating something new and not maintaining the business for much longer. Other ones, I think, would love to make sure that they can stay in the area. And so, that's why we're pushing to ensure that there's support for the businesses that want to remain there. We'll be doing some outreach work out of my office to make sure that people know and understand exactly what the rezoning means, means specifically to them as property owners, that they're not required to sell, that they're not required to do anything, and that, you know, we want to make sure that we're supporting all the interests of those businesses, whether they're interested in building housing or not.
So you believe the plan that allows in many areas, first-floor industrial would accommodate these types of uses?
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
Yeah, in part of the plan and the district, the first floor is to be light manufacturing and then residential above. And you believe that zoning would accommodate these kind of automotive-related uses so that they would have choices about the future?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think the automotive uses is included in the light, you know, industrial. So, I mean, it would really depend on the specific location.
Okay, thank you very much. And thank you for all of your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Thank you very much, Councilmember. We very much appreciate your joining us today. Good to see you and thank you again for all of your incredible partnership here. See you soon. Okay, well, next up is Councilmember Chi Ose. Councilmember, whenever you are ready, glad to have you here.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, Commissioners, and good afternoon, Chair. Today, as you know, I'm testifying on the Atlantic Avenue Mixed Use Plan. I cannot speak about this plan without first acknowledging the real housing crisis that severely impacts our city and the district that I represent. From 2010 to 2020, Bed-Stuy lost more than 22,000 black residents, and this number has likely increased due to the strain of our housing crisis. Because of this, it is key that we, as a city, work to apply all available tools to both build and increase our affordable housing stock and ensure that residents and existing affordable housing can remain. Community rezonings like AMA are key to ensuring we not only meet our goal to bring more affordable housing, but they are also necessary to make sure our neighborhoods are holistically invested into. For the past three years, my colleague, Councilmember Hudson, and I have advocated for a comprehensive rezoning plan that works for our communities. And I thank the administration and the various agencies, including the Department of City Planning, for working on this rezoning with us. While the existing proposal touches upon our need for affordable housing and investments, I want to use my testimony today to remind the administration that we still need to do more to ensure this plan works for all of our neighbors along Atlantic Avenue. First, it is imperative that the administration increases the amount of new affordable housing in the overall proposal. The community deserves to have every potential city-owned site in the area examined for maximum development of deeply affordable housing. We must also increase resources for HPD and our nonprofit partners to help longtime tenants and homeowners securely remain in their existing affordable homes, safe from harassment and predatory practices. Secondary, I ask the administration to invest through AMA in our district's green and open spaces, including the Lefferts Place and Westbrook Memorial Community Gardens, Hancock and Potomac Playgrounds, and the schoolyards for PS3 and PS93. I ask that the administration considers bringing in more resources and infrastructure improvements to these spaces. Moreover, I hear and understand the concerns brought to me by the Lefferts Place Block Association and the impacts of shadows on their community garden. I hope to work with the administration on this issue and look to consider solutions to mitigate this impact. Thirdly, I urge the administration to bring investments to improve the public realm at the Franklin Avenue Station and the surrounding areas. According to the Environmental Impact Study, the highest number of incremental subway trips is expected to occur at the Franklin Avenue C/S station and with expected heavy usage of this station. It is key to ensure the aesthetics, sanitation, and public safety of the surrounding areas are met. I urge the administration to invest into supplemental cleaning services through the Department of Sanitation and ACE, to invest in social services through DHS and Phoenix House along the Franklin Avenue corridors, or the Franklin Station corridors. I also urge the administration to work with the MTA to bring structural improvements to the station, overpass, and the small MTA properties surrounding it, some of which are covered with barbed wire fences, graffiti, and litter, and system improvements for better train service. Finally, I want to reiterate that we cannot add thousands of housing units to this stretch of Atlantic Avenue without a clear, fully funded commitment for a comprehensive redesign of this dangerous and hostile street, as Councilmember Hudson mentioned. In principle, I believe we need community rezonings like AMA to ensure we bring the housing and investments that are long overdue for our neighborhoods, but it is key to ensure this plan is one that truly works for everyone. I look forward to continuing my conversations with the administration on this plan and building out a community rezoning we can all be proud of. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember, and thank you too for all of your partnership and collaboration here. I just want to, one follow-up question about the Franklin Avenue Station, and then I will see if there is any other questions for you. So you noted a variety of issues at the shuttle and C station over there, cleaning, safety, structural, all things that you cited. Putting cleaning and safety aside just for a moment, can you share with us a little bit about the aesthetic issues that are present there and what your vision is for this station and also whether you've had any conversations with the MTA on that front?
Absolutely. So we've had a walkthrough with the administration as well as MTA in regards to some of the aesthetic problems of this specific site. There is severe rusting on the overpass and the station as a whole in terms of the outer looks of this specific site. In addition to that, there's a blank wall that could yield to a promising mural, maybe with some assistance from DC LA. In addition to that, on, this is a part of the overpass that creates a very dark corner on Franklin and Fulton, where there's a lot of public urination that takes place there, not a lot of lighting, there's scaffolding there in addition to, you know, more rusting as I noted before. I know that MTA has done some renovations of this overpass in the past. This is a request that was made of the Lefferts Place Block Association since they live very close to the station. And if there's any TLC that we can put into this specific area that will be impacted by this comprehensive rezoning would make both myself as well as many members of the community happy.
Okay, thank you, Councilmen. We appreciate it. We appreciate your patience today and your being with us. So thank you again. Okay, let me move on to Dash Henley from the New York City Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Chair Grodnech and Commissioners. Good afternoon. My name is Dash Henley and I'm the Borough Planner for the New York City Department of Transportation's Brooklyn Borough Commissioner's Office, and I've been the lead staffer helping out on this AMA effort. DOT is proud to be a part of the city's efforts to deliver thousands of new homes, more space for commercial and manufacturing businesses, and safer streets for all users. The agency encourages your support for the proposed rezoning and related actions. And DOT has been a partner with Department of City Planning, HPD, Parks, and others on these AMA efforts for over two years now, whether it's been participating in workshops, contributing safety data and operational information, providing expertise on best practices or information on relevant and applicable past projects, and also giving advice on the range of possibilities to enhance street safety, both within existing resources and with possible additional funding for traffic studies and capital projects. You know, we've met and will continue to meet with elected officials, partner agencies, community boards, working groups, steering committees from the public outreach and the general public. And based on those conversations, we've developed a series of street improvement projects that the Department of City Planning mentioned before, which we also refer to as SIPs, to be implemented this year as a down payment project, which will begin to advance the street safety goals laid out in the AMA Community Vision and Priorities Report. These early action items target several intersections in the study area and will include proven measures from our toolkit, which include painted curb extensions, enhanced crossings, markings refreshes, among other items. We think that this work will build off of work we've already done in the area, which includes creating a protected bike lane this past year on Bedford Avenue, which was not only a priority project for us but did fulfill one of the community report, the AMA community report requests and has shown enhanced safety for all road users. You know, all of this work is a direct response to the urgent need for safety improvements along this corridor and in this study area, and we think that these down payments demonstrate DOT's commitment to the AMA planning process. As DCP mentioned before, you know, the current AMA proposal before the commission does not include a redesign or any changes to traffic lanes on Atlantic Avenue right now. However, that does not preclude the city's consideration for long-term improvements to be determined with a future funded traffic study that can be committed to as part of the points of agreement for this rezoning, while it's under consideration by the City Council. You know, lastly, DOT would like to reaffirm to the commission that a partnership with DCP now in the future, and just thank you for your time and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thanks very much. I'm going to start with Commissioner Mann.
Thanks for coming today to provide some thoughts on the rezoning and thanks for your efforts to, you know, make this a safer set of intersections and streets. And it sounds like, you know, based on testimony of the council members, there's a very live conversation happening about the future of Atlantic Avenue that extends beyond the SIPs, so I'll let them, it seems like, continue to do their advocacy. I was just trying to understand the sequence of these things a little bit more and the timeline because, you know, if this rezoning is adopted, developers can go pull building permits, that'll have implications for the sidewalk dimensions. If DOT comes back later on and decides, well, we want to actually extend the sidewalk into the traffic lane or, you know, significantly increase bald outs, how does that coordination happen so we're not using public resources in a way that would be, could be better utilized by having developers build out a building pavement plan that reflects a dimension that as a city we prefer? So I'm just trying to understand how that coordination would happen, given that we don't really have a permanent sort of strategy here. We have a sort of interim strategy.
Right. It definitely depends on the level of intervention. I think, you know, we've worked very closely with the Department of City Planning so far and will continue to work on individual development projects. We have separate, you know, monthly meeting with all projects that we try to coordinate better on, so in the event that this goes through and there are those projects, we anticipate working with them on the individual development projects to see what the developer can do, what we can do in the short term, and how to coordinate with that with any future capital projects that might be a little more long-term.
Yeah, so again, thanks for that feedback. This gets maybe just the larger point about, you know, the challenge of these efforts. I know when, you know, I had a chance to work on East New York rezoning, that was obviously a planning strategy with Atlantic Avenue. Proposal was baked into the rezoning framework and there was a clear strategy around the streetscape and the development. And I would just encourage that continued focus earlier on these projects so we don't have a kind of interim strategy that, I think, as we heard from the council members, in some ways falls short of what we're hoping to see here. So, just a little editorializing there. Thanks for listening.
That's understood.
Thank you, Commissioner Osorio. Commissioner Benjamin.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much for being here. DOT has come up many times and so we appreciate your testimony. Quick questions, I just wanted to give you a chance to respond to some of the recommendations from the Borough President. I think there's particularly four very specific things. You already hinted to a potential traffic study on the Atlantic Avenue corridor, but specifically, kind of like, what is your preliminary response to the need for the recommendation to the road diet to four lanes? Two, pursuing a commercial parking spaces and metered parking for non-commercial vehicles? The investments on Lowry Triangle, I'm wondering if you can expand a little bit on that, to what extent is there a solid commitment? And then finally, the subway improvements, can you respond now or if later in writing, what do you prefer?
Sure. You know, on the road diet itself, that's something that we can't, we can neither commit to right now nor, you know, dismiss out of hand right now. That's something that we definitely need a traffic study for to look at, you know, any possible changes there and how those changes might affect that. But it is something that we can look into as part of a funded traffic study.
Is there like a timeline or something on that study? Is it considered right now or is it just something that you're hinting will be required?
It's something that could be negotiated as part of the POA in terms of the It's something that could be negotiated as part of the POA in terms of the timing of that and the funding amount. In terms of the second question on commercial parking and loading, that's something that we do sort of as a regular course of business. We work with, you know, whether it's individual locations of folks applying for loading zones or we look at corridors for that sort of thing. It's something we do in coordination with our parking unit and our freight mobility unit, and something that we have kept an eye on during this process. And it's something that, the details of that could be worked out in the POA too of the specifics, but we think we could do that with existing resources and funding of fulfilling in some form that commitment. In terms of Lowry Triangle, you know, that's something where we have already created somewhat of a new open space there by closing that portion of Underhill to traffic and creating a plaza that's sort of an extension of the triangle itself, and we're looking at further investments in response to both the Borough President's request and as well as the request, which was also in the community recommendations report. So that's definitely something we're focused on. And then in terms of the subway improvements, that's definitely, you know, something that's beyond our, you know, direct investment involvement as DOT, but we are definitely interested in improvements to the Franklin Avenue Station, and we understand what Councilman O'Shea brought up before, that we're, you know, when we're looking at the changes in this neighborhood, we do recognize that a lot of people will be induced to be walking north-south, whether it's from, to and from Atlantic Avenue or past Atlantic Avenue up to the A and the C along Fulton. So that's something that we want to prioritize, is making sure that folks can do that safely, and if there's any improvements that can be made there, that we will support them as much as we can.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Benjamin.
Hi, thank you very much for your presentation. I also have questions about the Atlantic Avenue corridor and whether the study you're doing will, since Atlantic Avenue, let me preface it by saying, since Atlantic Avenue is a thoroughfare, one of the main ways that commercial vehicles can traverse from the edge of Manhattan all the way to Long Island, since they can't go on parkways. I would hope that if you're looking at changing this, you're going to be looking at the whole corridor and not just this six-block-long part of Atlantic Avenue. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. And it's, I think it's a good call out to mention that it is a through truck route, that it does have the importance of, you know, the limited network there and that that is part of that network, and that's something that our freight mobility team has definitely flagged that they want to be involved with. So it is something where we would look at, you know, this sort of subsection, but also in the larger picture of, you know, how that network changes just beyond this small section as well.
Okay, because I know the Borough President has been interested in a diet to four lanes, but I must say that in much of Atlantic Avenue, the four lanes doesn't work very well because there's a parking lane, that's not included, but then the next lane always has trucks and other vehicles that are unloading, loading, and so in much of Atlantic Avenue, it next down to one lane, one moving lane during most of the hours that it exists. So in looking at this, I would ask you to look at how the four lane is actually working in reality. I mean, I would say the four lanes work much better in Queens, in the parts of Queens where it exists, than it does in Brooklyn, where you have the railroad structure and then you have the turn lanes underneath it.
Right.
So in looking at it, as I said, you said, and I appreciate that you're going to be looking at the whole corridor, not just this part of Atlantic Avenue, and also looking at it as a main transportation thoroughfare for trucks and other commercial vehicles.
Right.
And last but not least, once the study is complete, what would the process be if you decided to make significant or insignificant changes along Atlantic Avenue in this vein?
You mean in terms of timeline?
Both timeline, public involvement, how would we come to know of it?
Right. Yeah, in terms of timeline, if we were funded to do a traffic study and if it was, you know, decided by the administration that this was a priority, we could probably complete that in between one and a half and two years, and that would give us proposals that we could then go back to the public, the elected officials, community boards, and all that to issue a proposal. In terms of actual implementation after that, it would be, it would depend on whether it was an in-house project or a capital project. We could look at doing something where, you know, there was an in-house project initially and then a capital project after that, but the timeline would be very dependent on what the scope would be.
And if you were changing the physical dimensions of what is the street, you would have to come back to, through the ULEP process, is that, if you were demapping portions or mapping portions?
I don't think that we would be looking at demapping any portions. It would just be changes to the street geometry, so that wouldn't involve a ULEP action, but it would involve the other notification requirements that we have of working with other city agencies and presenting to elected officials and community boards.
And last but not least, have you looked, when you're doing this looking, could you look at the possibility, which has existed in other places, of pairing Atlantic Avenue with possibly Pacific or Dean or, and having perhaps other kinds of traffic, the bicycle traffic, et cetera, on those less thoroughfare streets in some type of a paired so that the traffic on Atlantic would continue to be prioritized for those that can't go elsewhere?
Right, yeah. It's definitely something we can look at. I know there's existing bike lanes on Dean and Bergen now, which we can look at, how those work, any changes that need to make there. That's something that's definitely come up in conversations, especially in relation to Atlantic Avenue, so that's something we can take a look at as part of it.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
I look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And thank you, Mr. Henley. We appreciate your time and your presence here.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, let me move on to Brian Coleman of the Greenpoint Manufacturing and Design Center, to be followed by Gibb Vicconi.
Brian, are you able to unmute?
Hi there.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Brenda Lau, I'm the Assistant Project Manager at GMDC. I'm just going to be sharing the testimony on behalf of Brian Coleman, who is the CEO of GMDC. So GMDC is the city's premier nonprofit industrial real estate developer of affordable manufacturing space. GMDC has developed over 725,000 square feet of industrial space in Brooklyn and Queens for occupancy by small manufacturing businesses. We currently own and manage seven buildings which are home to over 760 manufacturing jobs among 130 businesses. Our tenants include woodworkers, cabinet makers, display makers, metalworkers, and a variety of artisanal trades and artists. GMDC owns the multi-tenanted manufacturing center located at 1102 Atlantic Avenue, which runs block through to 1093 Pacific Street. In 2012, we bought the former auto parts building from an owner operator who initially had a total of four jobs in the building, including the two owners. Following renovation, it is now home to eight small manufacturing businesses with 60 workers between them, making an average annual salary of $54,587, which is well above typical retail and service salaries, and many of the small business owners and workers are also community residents in Crown Heights and Bed-Stuy. GMDC appreciates the planning work that has gone into continuing to encourage modern manufacturing to flourish in the AIMUP area, from the work of Community Board Eight and their M-Crown efforts to the support of the Department of City Planning, recognizing that many of today's manufacturers are good neighbors to both residential and commercial uses. An example of what can be achieved in the AIMUP area is our latest project in Brownsville, Brooklyn, at 805 Rockaway Avenue. It is the first mixed-use building in New York City to combine affordable housing and manufacturing space in one structure by safely separating the two uses through efficient and environmentally sustainable design. This project ensured the preservation of affordable housing, excuse me, ensured the preservation of existing manufacturing uses on-site, creating new jobs while also providing much-needed affordable housing. And the success of this project was also due to the collaborative partnership between city agencies such as DCP, DEP, HPD, and EDC, which supported the mission-driven commitments of nonprofit developers such as GMDC and our partner, The Bridge. Public-private partnerships can continue to create innovative projects such as 805 Rockaway and traditional multi-tenanted industrial buildings such as 1102 Atlantic Avenue. These buildings can continue to operate in the area set as a good neighbor while also adopting new technologies and creative processes of the evolving and very important light manufacturing sector. And we hope the conversation can continue as the rezoning moves through ULEPs so that these mixed-use projects can incorporate industrial uses that may have a chance to develop in the future AIMUP area and bring the good quality jobs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Okay, Mr. Vicconi on Zoom.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Gibb Vicconi. I am the Chair of the Prospect Heights Neighborhood Development Council, and our mission is to promote a safer, more just and sustainable neighborhood. Since it's now possible to map mandatory inclusion housing option three alone in a residential upzoning, we strongly believe options one and two should be dropped from the application in order to provide the greatest number of deeply affordable units in the rezoned area. Brooklyn Community District Three experiences one of the highest displacement rates in New York City. We support Brooklyn Community Board Eight's call for the Department of Housing Preservation and Development to create a new class of lottery preference to allow persons displaced from Community District Eight preference for 50% of the affordable apartments created in buildings developed under AIMUP. Sorry, I hadn't started my video. Apologize. The proposed, the proposed R7D zoning along Dean and Bergen Streets in Prospect Heights is not a strong fit with the surrounding context, permitting height even greater than the Newswalk Building at 535 Dean Street and the Peter F. Riley Storage Warehouse at 491 Bergen Street. However, we support the creation of affordable housing for families and seniors on the HPD sites located at 542 Dean Street and 516 Bergen Street, and are supportive of increasing density on those lots to R7D. We also support R7D zoning for other lots in the rezoning area if they were developed as 100% affordable housing, but all other lots should be zoned R6A for context. We support an incentive for creating open space in the Special Atlantic Avenue Mixed Use District, but any such space is created must be at least maintained and preferably owned by the Department of Parks and Recreation. Property owners that receive such an incentive must also provide funding for maintenance through an annual property tax assessment payable to DPR. The completion of the Atlantic Yards Project and the anticipated development resulting from the AIMUP rezoning will add more than 15,000 residents to the northern portion of Prospect Heights by 2035. This area already has a significant shortage of open space. Atlantic Avenue between Flatbush Avenue and Bedford Avenue constitutes 19 acres of publicly-owned land. Currently, 80% of the 115-foot right-of-way is dedicated to through travel of private vehicles and trucks. We suggest that at least 50% of the right-of-way should prioritize people and nature. While this might not generate a typical park, it can provide safe and healthy walking and biking environments for current and future residents and much-needed curb infrastructure. DOT, in coordination with the Department of City Planning, should develop a district-wide curb zone management plan prioritizing pedestrians and cyclists, street trees, and rain gardens, as well as space for waste containers and loading zones. It should limit, it should limit private parking in front of buildings and minimize disruptive loading docks and driveways. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Vicconi. We appreciate your being here with us. Okay, next up is Toby Hyde, followed by Alex Mazza and Antonio Alvarez. Mr. Hyde, whenever you are ready.
Toby, are you able to unmute?
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
We can.
Excellent. Thank you for your time this afternoon, and I speak to you as a strong supporter of the AIMUP rezoning project and want to commend the staff of DCP and councilors Hudson and O'Shea for getting us this far. I want to make a couple points about this. One, I live nearby. I live just, just two blocks from the southern edge of the rezoning area, which, which ends at, I believe, Bergen, and I'm on Prospect. So I walk around this neighborhood and I see changes, and I think a lot of, there's been a lot of well-intentioned and thoughtful work to protect existing tenants. But I walk around the neighborhood and I see new buildings, and I think, that's great. I can't wait to share this neighborhood with people who want to live here, and I wish the new buildings were bigger. And I want to make a really important point about the plan itself and the decreasing steps of density, and you'll excuse my hair, I'm on paternity leave, so I was taking care of a baby today, so, you know, I didn't have a chance to do my hair for the commission day, but, I just noticed on video. This is really important, the step downs from Atlantic to the avenues to Grand and Classen and Nostrand and Franklin and others, and, and then to the mid-blocks. It's silly, DC, and the commission should make a point to note that and make it a priority for DCP and others for future land use actions to get rid of this practice. There's no reason to put new multifamily buildings and prioritize that only on major thoroughfares and large corridors. That's a silly way to live. We, as humans, sometimes we enjoy activities, sometimes we enjoy peace and quiet, and there's no reason that residents of new buildings, new multifamily buildings should be pushed onto thoroughfares, and we've spent a lot of time talking about traffic on Atlantic. Atlantic is a barrier. Atlantic's a problem. Who wants to live on Atlantic when you can live on Bergen and Dean and Prospect, et cetera, and inside the zoning area, Pacific? There's no reason to mandate higher densities on those thoroughfares when there are wonderful, excellent streets there, so the whole area really off of Atlantic should be 7D. I also want to point out something that, I thought there was a good conversation about the future of Atlantic Avenue, and I know that DOT is committed to a traffic study. And I, and I want to emphasize too, the extremely slow bus times coming across Atlantic today and make sure that we are prioritizing bus riders in that redesign, as Atlantic is currently an enormous barrier between the neighborhoods, the north and south across the territory. So again, please approve this plan, please move this along. It's been in process for years and years, decades, and Gibb can recite chapter and verse how long this plan has been in progress. So, Commission, please move this forward in timely fashion. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde, and we wish you all the best with that baby over there.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to Alex Mazza and Antonio Alvarez.
Hello, can folks hear me?
We can.
Great. Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Alex Mazza, and I live just around the corner from this project in Crown Heights. I live on a corner of Franklin and Prospect, and I'm here today in strong support of this proposal and the much-needed upzoning along Atlantic Avenue and in the area. I'm deeply concerned about the ongoing rise in rental prices in Brooklyn and in this area in particular is in urgent need of more housing. Demand keeps growing, people want to live here, but the supply isn't keeping up, and that's driving prices higher and pushing people out. This project is an important step forward towards creating more housing that we desperately need and addressing this affordability crisis. That said, I think we should even go further. I think we need to have more, as much density as we can in the proposed area. On the scale of housing, crisis demands bold action, and we cannot afford to miss opportunities to build as much housing as possible in well-connected transit-rich areas like this one. And as like the previous person mentioned, I also am in support of making, you know, more possibilities for improving the transit for busing in this area. That's, that's also highly needed. And so I think, you know, as someone who wants to remain in the city long-term and eventually start and raise a family here, I worry about whether that will be possible if housing remains so scarce and expensive. So we need to make sure that New York is a place where working families, working people and families can build a future, and that means embracing more density and more housing. So I urge the commission to approve this upzoning, and, you know, I thank you all for your time and hearing us out today.
Great. Thank you for being with us. Next up is Antonio Alvarez, followed by Sharon Wetterburn here in the room, and then Kari Williams on Zoom. Kari Williams on Zoom.
Hi, all. Can you hear me?
We can.
Great. Thank you, Commissioners. I just wanted to express my strong support for this project for two main reasons. First off is housing affordability. I'm a young adult living in Bed-Stuy bordering this corridor, and I'm experiencing the housing crisis firsthand. This is the exact type of project that the city needs to stabilize the housing market and put some downward pressure on the rental market. I'm not a high-income earner, and I know that when this project goes forward, I will not necessarily win one of the lotteries or be able to afford the market-rate housing. However, I know that if these types of projects are not built, the housing scarcity crisis will continue to escalate, and I will no longer be able to even afford my current apartment. I cannot even consider having children or starting a family in the neighborhood right now because there are no housing options within my price range. It's really simple, we need more housing options, and these projects bring this desperately needed housing. I think this is especially prescient when you consider the current state of affairs on the corridor, which is predominantly occupied by dilapidated car garages, abandoned warehouses, empty lots, and old buildings and old storefronts. This redevelopment will be an immense step forward for Brooklyn and the area, and the suggestion that neighborhood character trumps the human need for housing, I think, is frankly inappropriate. The second reason I strongly support this project is the work done to improve pedestrian and cycling safety on and around the corridor. I'm not sure if any of the Commissioners live or visit this corridor often, but I actually go to the gym on Atlantic Avenue and walk it almost every other day. The road as it is right now is incredibly dangerous for pedestrians and cyclists. Cars fly down this road at extreme speeds, the crossing is incredibly long, and the turns are really blind, which makes walking or cycling around it not only dangerous, but frankly really scary. This has the result of cutting Bed-Stuy off from the neighborhoods to the south, which include the Central Brooklyn Library and Prospect Park. I know there was some concern from Commissioner Osorio about increasing open space in the region, which is an important consideration, but Atlantic Avenue is one of the main barriers stopping Bed-Stuy residents from getting to the largest park in this area in Brooklyn. The park is easily a ten-minute bike ride away from my apartment, but I often choose not to ride to it because I know I'm risking my life every time I try and cross Atlantic Avenue. This area is just ripe for redevelopment for high-density housing, and it really needs to be considered strongly. In conclusion, it's the exact type of project that should be a no-brainer for the Planning Commission, and I ask the Commission, as a citizen of Brooklyn, if not this, then what? It's incredible to see the extreme lengths the applicants have gone to not just address community concerns, but also to meet the needs of the local residents. If we cannot say yes to this type of project, then we may as well give up on addressing the housing crisis, give up on Vision Zero for pedestrian safety, and give up on development across the city. So much work and so much care has been given into this proposal that it really needs to be given the go-ahead. Thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next up is Sharon Wedderburn. Ms. Wedderburn, welcome, followed by Kari Williams, Chloe Stern, and Robert Witherwax. And let me just make a quick public service announcement for a moment here before you start. If you're interested in being heard on this item, we're getting close to the end of the line, so please sign up. Welcome.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for your careful consideration of this project. As it has been said before, this has been a more than decade-long endeavor, first started with the Community Board in order for us to be able to, one, provide housing, and, two, to provide jobs that people who do not have college degrees will be able to make a better salary to enable them to stay within the city. I'm not going to beat some horses dead, but I want to tell you this. We actually approved this unanimously, but our vote was yes, but. So things that are critical, because I cheer housing advocacy and land use, I've heard from multiple stakeholders over and over and over again, and as a resident of this community, have also experienced in terms of what happens with different types of housing and the vast loss of our residents over a ten-to-fifteen-year period. We first started seeing a lot of displacement beginning around 2012. Some of it was stemmed in 2019 with the passing of the state laws regarding rental tenant protections. So let's start at the very beginning. We are always in favor of having more affordable housing. Specifically to this district, there are two projects that were designated to be raised to R seven Z, R seven Z, seven D zoning. We only want this zoning to be possible if it is a hundred percent affordable, it's important to our community, and being, enabling people to remain. The thing that I'm really concerned about are tenant protections. So we know that people that are facing evictions are more likely to be successful in saving their evictions if they have legal representation. As we know from different zones within or near our communities, specifically zip codes of one one two one three, one one two one six, one one two three eight, one one two three three, we've had a lot of displacement. Representation makes a difference of someone being able to stay there. And it's not unrealistic, you know, lofty, to say that, you know, ten million dollars annually, will that cover everybody's needs? We doubt it, but we need to be able to approach a number that it gives everybody a fair opportunity to remain in the community, because oftentimes the displacement occurred in the constructive evictions where landlords were able to double the rents of residents. Nothing changed in the apartment, but the people who were occupying them, right? So, you know, just being able to be in a well-located, well-resourced community is important. The next thing is the establishment for the registry for those who have been displaced. We strongly support this, and this is something that did not, that came from the community directly, that in order to be able to maintain the character of a community, a community is not buildings, it is not open space, buildings, open space, and its residents, and it gives a history to the community. Our community is very rich in terms of long-term residents, and we have people who have been able to live there throughout their lives, and I'm talking about the octogenarians within our community. They give us a great sense of history.
Ms. Wedderburn, you have a question from Vice Chair Nocco, so there may be occasion to, if there are more things that you wanted to say, might be a change there.
Thank you.
Do you want to conclude your, in one or two sentences?
One or two sentences. This is very important, that we get this project to proceed as quickly as possible. We've been waiting for a long time. We need to take special consideration for those who have been included in many of the planning of the new development coming online, and as looking to the Atlantic Yards Project and what it has not been able to deliver, it has not been able to deliver the community's voice, and we urge the funding of an ongoing monitoring group so that we would be able to continue to monitor progress and monitor the obligations as stated at this time. Thank you.
Two long sentences.
That's me.
I wanted to, thank you for your testimony and for your commitment to your, to your community. I wanted to ask, you mentioned one hundred percent affordability. What AMIs do you believe constitute one hundred percent?
So the people that are most struggling are the people that are to remain within the community are people that are earning salaries between forty-five and eighty thousand dollars, too much money oftentimes for them to be subsidized, too much money coming out of their net income from their working. So that posits something that goes between forty-five and sixty percent affordability, eighty percent, eighty percent AMI is de facto market. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stay right there, Commissioner Osorio, I have a question.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for being here, thank you for your testimony. I, we heard earlier from H P D in terms of, you know, their constraints in terms of fully responding to the, to what's both kind of like the tenant displacement registry and the housing preference program, and so I'm wondering if H P D has reached out to you, has there been conversations, have they explained those? Have there been opportunities to brainstorm around ways to address?
We haven't brainstormed together. There is some awareness about that because it's like, wow, this is a bold proposal, but this is our opportunity to ask for it. So we, and there are members of the committee that have professional experience in terms of, you know, looking at buildings and looking at project viability. So we understand that there is a risk, but there is a risk well worth taking, and I think between the community being involved and the planning professionals being involved, we can come to a good resolution.
Thank you for your recommendations and for your testimony.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Kari Williams on Zoom, Chloe Stern, and Robert Witherwax.
Good afternoon. Can you guys hear me?
We can. Welcome.
Um, okay, well, hello. My name is Kari Williams. I am a community member and neighbor, as well as a member of the local Westbrook Memorial Garden, which is a Brooklyn-Queens Land Trust community garden located at twelve thirty-three Pacific Street, which is block twelve hundred, lot seventy, and would be impacted by the Atlantic Avenue, any developments on the Atlantic Avenue on lots five, sixteen, twenty-one, and twenty-seven. The Pacific Street is zoned as R six A, and the Atlantic Avenue side is currently zoned as M one one and R six A. And similar to some previous speakers, we'd like to suggest, as a local community member, I guess I'll be transparent in saying, I think there's, as word about the development continues to sort of be spread and get out, there's a lot of confusion and fear specifically about the details of the rezoning and the densities, and specifically like shifting to higher density models in, like nine A specifically. I know, like, not all properties are being suggested to, to be driven up to nine A, however, the idea of the development impacting the local neighborhood in an environmental aspect, in a communal aspect, and in sort of like a day-to-day life aspect is pretty important. But for this meeting particularly, we wanted to kindly request that, like, as part of the environmental impact studies, that shade studies be done with any proposed development on that twelve hundred block. So that's like right where, that's like in between Atlantic and Bedford Avenue, so that's like right, right on Atlantic and within the Aim Up, because that would largely impact our space, as well as like the local sort of like rental spaces, like a lot of like light, a lot of like light and like that current renters depend on would be shifted on this. We, as many other speakers, support this plan. We think environment, or we think the shift in housing is important. We are living in a housing crisis. We've worked with our council member, Shi Ose, to get more aspect on this, and we also know that outside of the housing crisis, there's a lot of private interest in this land, so development is likely to be slated regardless. And within this, on a block with a lot of members who are rent-stabilized, who are currently struggling with current deregulation, current deregulation and displacement, that these shade studies, that the environmental impact study, as well as like our, the previous concerns about deep affordability and deep affordability, open space, and community impact are highlighted, and yeah, thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Williams. We appreciate it. Okay, next up is Chloe Stern.
I do not have Chloe Stern, Chair.
Okay. And Mr. Witherwax, you may be the last word. We'll see if Ms. Stern comes back to join us, but I will just again encourage anybody who wants to be heard today, this is your chance to sign up.
Great. Cognizant that I'm what stands between you and lunch, so I will keep this brief. I am Robert Witherwax. I'm the Chair of Community Board Eight's Environment, Sanitation, and Transportation Committee. You already heard from my colleague and friend for many years, Sharon Wedderburn, our Land Use and Housing Chair. You've also heard from Gibb Vicconi, who serves on Community Board Eight along with us. So I'm just going to hit some of the spots that they kind of missed or didn't come up in their testimony. One of the tent poles of Aim Up and M-Crown, as Community Board Eight has dealt with it for the past ten years, has been a cross-subsidy to keep the light manufacturing uses that currently exist in this space under the M one one, to keep them viable even as we move into a residential framework. So items number two and three on our comments on Aim Up really go to that, and we want to refer you to the Gowanus Mix that was approved in the recent years as a model that we think is applicable to these spaces. Moving on to some of the economic development aspects of our comments on the Aim Up, the workforce development programs, the career development programs for youth and young adults, right? The apprenticeship incentive programs go hand and glove with keeping those kind of uses here present in an otherwise residential community in ways that are compatible and non-exclusive. The Local Entrepreneur Capital Fund, for example, as well as the Green Technology Incubator, and even a relocation fund, much like you would do with tenants who are displaced during the construction, residential tenants, perhaps a model for commercial tenants as well, could be, it could be explored. And then in conclusion, on my bailiwick of the streets, I just want to underline the fact that we have called for a master plan for the local stakeholder community to develop a comprehensive plan for the street network that addresses many of the concerns that the Commissioners have brought forth today and that Dash Henley brought forth in his testimony, too. We're taking a more wait-and-see approach than perhaps the Borough President did with calling for a road diet right away, but that would certainly be something we'd entertain at the Community Board level. And then finally, as an overarching element of all of this, again, our point twenty-five on our testimony, the city shall fund a consultant to act as a facilitator of a community oversight body formed to oversee the city's delivery of all of these benefits as part of the Aim Up neighborhood rezoning, to provide transparency and accountability with the funding and body described therein. So with all that, I encourage the Commission to support Aim Up. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. We have a question from Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much for your, for being here, for your testimony, but also for the thoughtfulness of the recommendations. I am particularly very interested in the economic development recommendations, and I'm wondering if, you know, we heard earlier from G M D C, and so I'm interested in hearing a little bit more about what's been the process to develop them. Have you had opportunities to discuss them with the city specifically, but also has G M D C been part of these conversations? Like, how can, tell us a little bit more about the process behind this. How did you get there?
I personally wasn't very integral to the development of those points, so I can't speak to whether G M D C has been a part of them or not, but I know really they, they came from the community, to a large degree. They came from the members of our board and the committees of our, of our board that work on these things professionally and have a vision which was shared for the community.
Fair enough. Thank you. What's been the response so far to your recommendations?
I have not heard.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Witherwax. We appreciate you and all the members of Community Board Eight who've been part of this process for so long. We very much appreciate everything that you have done to get us to today. I'm going to just do a quick canvas to see if there's anybody else who is looking to be heard on this item today. Madam Secretary, do you see anybody?
No, Chair, I do not.
Okay, I will note that before I close this hearing, the record will remain open on calendars twenty-two to thirty-one through five o'clock on Tuesday, February eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five, to receive written comments on the D E I S. Now, I will close the hearing on calendars twenty-two to thirty-one and ask you, Madam Secretary, if there's any other business before the Commission today?
No, Chair Grodnik, there is no other business before the Commission for the public meeting, but I do have some information to share. For those of you who are unable to or did not wish to testify, you can submit written testimony online by selecting this hearing on the N Y C Engage portal, through D C P's website, or by mailing your comments to City Planning Commission Calendar Information Office, one twenty Broadway, thirty-first floor, New York, New York, one zero two seven one. The time is one twenty-eight P M.
Great. Just want to note, it may become one twenty-nine P M. I will just say, we appreciate everybody who turned up today to testify on all of the items that we heard. Thank you to Department of City Planning staff, Brooklyn office in particular, on Aim Up, thank you, and our partner agencies at H P D and D O T and the others who were here today. We thank you very much for all of your time and attention, of course, to the Commission, as always, appreciate your attentiveness and patience throughout this process. With that, now at, Madam Secretary, you can call the time.
One twenty-eight P M.
Still one twenty-eight, we are adjourned. Thank you.